Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on this day, Tuesday, November 21st, 2023. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will also be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the Hands Up feature in Teams to be automatically placed in queue. And trustees, please remember to turn your desk mics on when you speak. Also, please remember if you speak when you are not recognized or when you do not have the floor, your mic will be muted. So let us begin. Begin with our land acknowledgement, opening prayer, Our Father, and National Anthem. I turn it over to Student Trustee McGuire.
Thank you, Chair. So since this week is National Anti-Bullying Week and stuff, and there's been many celebrations of this within our school, I saw this in my school today, I wanted to do a quick prayer about anti-bullying. So in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear Lord, I pray for your children's education. Help them through their journey. I know that you made everyone special, and we love them for it. I pray that you grant them the mental power and fortitude to stand up to bullies. I pray that you lift up their self-confidence and that you make them feel proud for who they are. Do not let anyone make them feel inferior. Do not make them feel small or ashamed to be different. Bless them to accept themselves and not base their happiness on whether people like them or not. Make them know that you made them perfect and that they have no obligation to please anyone. Let them celebrate their differences and not be made to feel bad about them. Let them not feel victimized by their teachers or their schoolmates. If they're going through something in school, grant them the courage to tell us about it. Let them not accept bullying and let them resist it. They're your children, and we love them very much. Let them feel this love and go through their lives with confidence. Amen.
We'll now begin our land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today...
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround you greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
To honor and respect.
For directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Misses Sagas of the dreaded First Nations.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Student Trustee McGuire, your Our Father?
Yes, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
You join me in rising for the National Anthem? There were no motions from the in-camera session that will require a vote in the public session. Have we come to the approval of the agenda? Do we have any additional addition or deletion to the agenda? And do trustees want any item removed from the consent agenda? Trustee Saunders?
Yeah, could we remove the 7.1.2.4 Educational Assistance? Move that from the consent agenda, please.
Sorry, 7.1?
0.2.4.
And just because my hearing is getting older, move it to... To consent?
Out of consent, out of consent, yeah, yeah, so we can discuss it. Thanks.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Ms. I would like to take out of the consent agenda 7.1.2.3 Academic Promotion.
7.1.2.3?
Yes.
Out of the consent agenda. And are there any further deletions or corrections to the agenda, trustees? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? As amended. Somebody move that, Superintendent? Sorry, Trustee Carabella? And seconded by?
I'll second it.
Trustee Murphy? All in favor? I think we need to be a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
The two items out?
Yes.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn-Ternata?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
I am in favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Chua and Deepu are not here. Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Okay, in favors, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, six, opposed, three. So we approve the agenda as amended. Motion carries. To be declared? Seeing none? We will now proceed with the election of the Chair of the Board for the period of November 21st, today, 2023, to the first board meeting in November of 2024. Should a vote by secret ballot become necessary this evening, Student Trustee McGuire has volunteered to act as scrutineer, as have Superintendents Denalfo and Bakic, while Superintendent Lofts and myself will tabulate the ballots. We will now proceed with the election of Chair of the Board for the period November 21st, 2023, to the first board meeting in November 2024. And should a vote by secret ballot come necessary? We have our scrutineers and we have Superintendent Lofts tonight. According to our board bylaws, a nomination motion for the position of Chair of the Board must be duly moved and seconded and received by the Secretary of the Board. I will now ask for nominations to come forward. Superintendent?
So good Lord.
Trustee O'Hearn-Ternata?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. It would be my privilege in order to nominate Trustee Duarte for Chair of the Board.
Have a seconder for that?
I'm seconded.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew? Just, Trustee Duarte, accept the nomination for the position of Chair of the Board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Are there any other nominations? I'm looking here to a trustee, O'Hearn-Ternata, oh, your hands down. Trustee Kennedy?
Nominate trustee O'Hearn.
Trustee O'Hearn-Ternata? That's moved by trustee Kennedy. Do we have a seconder for that?
I will second that.
Trustee Saunders? Does trustee O'Hearn-Ternata accept the nomination for the position of Chair of the Board?
Thank you to trustee Kennedy and Saunders, but no, I will have to say no to that nomination.
Okay, hearing no, decline? Are there any more nominations to come forward before we close? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. I move to nominate trustee Saunders.
Just taking my time here, sorry, reading. And that is moved by trustee Carabella. Do we have a seconder for that?
I'll second it.
Trustee Kennedy? Seconded, seconded it? Does trustee Saunders, do you accept the nomination for the position of Chair of the Board?
I will accept that.
Accepted? Are there any more nominations for the position of Chair of the Board? Are there any more nominations for Chair? Finally, are there any more nominations for Chair of this Board? Seeing no further nominations? May I request a mover and a seconder to close the nominations for the position of Chair of the Board? So we need somebody to move that we close nominations now. Okay, trustee Agnew? Seconded by trustee Powell, sorry if I missed anybody? Thank you for your patience, everyone. I would now like to give each nominee for Chair an opportunity, if they wish, to say a few words and allow trustees to ask any questions of the candidate prior to a vote. Not knowing if there is a particular order we go in, I would go in the order of the nominations. So I will turn to trustee Duarte, if you'd like to say any words.
Thank you, Chair. Before I proceed, I'd like to set the record straight on an item I missed at the last board meeting, and I did my thank yous to all the trustees. That's one person I missed thanking, and that one person has contributed well to the work of this Board and has been supportive to move the business of this Board forward. And I want to thank trustee Agnew for your work as vice chair. That's much appreciated. So I just want to set the record straight. Now my bid for Chair, my spiel, thank you trustees, O'Hearn-Ternata and trustee Agnew for nominating me to the position of Chair of the Board. I'm really humbled and pleased to receive your nomination and accept that with humility and gratitude. It has been my privilege and honor to serve and develop this Board for two years as vice chair and two years as Chair. I'm grateful because of this roles, I've had the opportunity, opportunity to meet, work, and learn from so many wonderful people within our system and external to the XDSB. And this has given me a depth and a broader understanding of publicly funded Catholic education. In putting my name forward for the position of Chair, I've made myself available and spoken to each of you trustees and have answered your questions and queries. I will reiterate the following. If you did notice, I'm a committed person and a hard worker. I understand the huge time requirements for this position, and I have consistently demonstrated prompt responses to you, staff, and our stakeholders. I have always been prepared and organized for board meetings, which have been conducted in accordance with the Education Act, our procedures, bylaws, the board policies, and practices. You may have noticed that I'm a stickler for policy. Yes, I believe in running efficient meetings. We do have a good handle on setting agendas, and our meetings are short and we stay on point. I think we have done a very good job here. I've supported the needs of every trustee, requesting information from staff, providing guidance, and obtaining professional advice as needed, so as to enable you to make informed decisions on agenda items. Your requests have been promptly raised and discussed with the Director and staff to bring it to resolution. I make the time, and I'm present at every, lots of events across our system, at OCSTA, in our community, and I believe I have represented the Board very well. We have been involved with, with work on our new multi-year strategic plan. I had the good fortune of chairing the multi-year strategic planning committee. I look forward to the multi-year strategic plan being rolled out in January, and I assure you that it will be our focus, driving everything we do or say at this Board. As you also know, I've spearheaded trustee regional school visits for several years now, which is moving along quite well. I'm a huge proponent of professional development for trustees and staff likewise. We have professional development sessions lined up every month on a wide range of topics. There is a lot to learn, trustees. I'm a balanced, well-rounded, and fair individual, and I hope you see those qualities in me and all. But it's available to meet with you as a chat of the culture and traditions. Our board's meetings can get challenging at times, and my assurance to you is that mutual respect will prevail at this board table. Together, we will strive to make it an enjoyable experience for all of us. Finally, as I said last year, trustees have a unique opportunity to make a difference in the education and lives of our students. My vision for this year is that we channel our energies with a laser focus on reading, writing, arithmetic, and our faith, to bring the best in every aspect of education to our student, be it curricular or extracurricular, and give each and every student the opportunity to succeed within our pillars of achieving, believing, and belonging. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, trustee Duarte. This is an opportunity for any other trustees to ask any questions of trustee Duarte. All right. Seeing, unless I'm missing somebody, seeing that not being taken advantage of, I will now turn it over to trustee Saunders to, again, as we heard earlier, say a few words.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I like trustee Duarte to attend school visits, and I attend everything that I can possibly squeeze into my schedule. So I'm very interested in supporting the schools, supporting what we do here, and talking up the schools to the maximum advantage. But I also, in my approach, I also sort of manage for results, and that's been what I've done throughout my career. And the results I'm looking at right now are, we're going to soon find out we have a serious financial issue. We have staffing issues. We have classes without teachers. We have teachers, classes being taught by teachers that aren't qualified. We are sacrificing the education for students. We've got students that are now three months behind in courses. We have an IB program that's missing one of its critical courses that is going to jeopardize students graduating at time. And then also, if, anecdotally, if we understand, understand what I've been told, the morale has never been lower at the Board. So I think the picture that we have is, we need someone who's watching the shop. We need someone who demands accountability, who is, who's interested in oversight, and has a clarity of purpose that's focused on education. And that's what I want to bring to the Board. I want to bring us back to balanced budget, you know, happy teachers, kids that are getting the benefits that they deserve, and, and staff that are in place, ready, and we work with our principals in our staffing projections. So that is why I would like to, the opportunity to be Chair, and I'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. As was asked earlier, it's an opportunity to ask questions, and I see that trustee Agnew has raised her hand. Trustee Agnew?
Thank you very much, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Saunders. So I do have a question, just listening intently to what you were saying. A lot of what you were talking about is operational matters that I think actually would lay with the Director. So I'm trying to perhaps understand more about how you relate that to your role as the Chair, and if you could speak a little bit more about the actual role of the Chair, because again, a lot of what I heard is operational matters that would lay with the Director.
Thank you very much for the question. So the Director is our one employee, is accountable to the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees has fiduciary responsibility, responsibility for making sure that the Board is being run correctly with, with, you know, to the advantage of the students. So I think the role of the Chair is to work with the Director and through him with his staff to ensure that our Board is moving forward, we're accountable, we're, there's proper oversight, because I think ultimately, the buck stops with us. And I think if we just sort of decide, well, this is operational, and this is a board work, we're going to sacrifice the, the Board. And I think that's why we were elected, that's what our constituencies expect of us, and that's what I intend to do. I intend to work with the Director, demand accountability, demand that, that we do better than we're doing, and move forward. Thank you very much.
Trustee Powell?
Thank you, through Director, Mr. Chair or Director today? Yeah, I guess just to piggyback on what trustee Agnew was saying, I'm just concerned about, again, that's a lot of operational, but with this demand, how is that? How is that not doing the Director's job? How is that being Chair? Like, how are you prepared to be Chair, not Director?
Well, as I indicated, the Director reports to the Chair and to the Board. So by creating a vision, by creating a path forward, by, you know, elucidating and talking about what we expect as trustees and the Board, the, the, the Director will take that in and then use that to move the Board forward. So that, that would be the relationship that I would want to create, and that's a relationship that I think we need to have. I don't think we've had the oversight, I don't think we've had the accountability that we need. So that's, that's where I would work with the Director to ensure that that's happening.
Trustee Kennedy, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Director Quinn. So just to trustee Saunders, I do think a lot of the things, I do hear some operational in there, but at the end of the day, a lot of the operational is affected by the budget. So just a couple of questions, you know, will you commit to a balanced budget, not compliant? Because we're still using our reserves for that, and a focus on increasing enrollment?
Yeah, definitely. I think what we're seeing is that the issues we're having with the budget is that string that goes through all of our operations. It's the one that created the staffing issues, that creates educational issues, that's creating morale issues. So I think, yeah, I will commit to, we have to have a balanced budget, and we, sorry, what was your second question? Enrollment, yeah. And we've got to get out there and get the enrollment up, because that's what drives the GSN, that's what drives this organization. We need to be out there and find out what's happening, why are we not getting students? Is it, is it a combination of things? And what can we do to mitigate that? Because, because without the students coming into kindergarten, eventually this Board's going to be in a real, a real problem. So that would be another area I'd like to, to commit to, you know, moving forward.
Thank you, trustee Duarte.
Thank you, Chair. I did hear my, first of all, I want to thank trustee Saunders for putting your name forward, really appreciate that. I think I did hear, Chair, that trustee, trustee Saunders mentioned, I think the role of the Chair is this. I would like to seek clarification to find out, for trustee Saunders to explain to me, what is the role of the Chair as per the Education Act, Section 218.4? What is the role of the Chair? And I hope, I would like to hear if trustee Saunders does understand the role of the Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would you read that section to us, please? I'm just asking whether you know the role of the Chair, Director, sorry. Well, I can guarantee you I'll know it about 10 minutes after becoming the Chair inside and out, but I think the role of the Chair is, there's many roles of the Chair, and I unfortunately think that some of that is not happening. And I don't think the oversight and accountability aspect of the fiduciary responsibility is being taken care of. So in addition to setting the agendas, setting policy, setting vision, I think there's other things the Chair can do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustees, looking. Saw a hand up for a moment, no? Trustee Duarte, if you'd lower your hand? Trustee Kennedy, you're...
The questions are only for trustee Saunders at this point. Is that correct?
Yes. We had an opportunity earlier. Go ahead.
Then everyone have a question.
Okay, trustee O'Hearn-Ternata?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Saunders, and again, good for you for putting your name forward. I just have a clarifying question. As Chair, in my opinion, we have to be very careful that we're not making decisions based upon anecdotal information and that we get the data. So in your opinion as well, when you're making decisions that we're not, I'm very data-driven in my personal life, so that is very data-driven here, we're not working off anecdotal, or they said, or he said, or she said, but what the facts are?
That's correct. And if you recall, I think for the last year, myself and I believe trustee Kennedy have been asking for data, particularly in the financial area, and that has not been produced. We still have a, I think we could probably go through and find dozens of emails where we're asking for data. That is something that I think, I mean, I definitely would require, that if a trustee asks a question, data-related, it has to be responded to. It can't be, can't be ignored. So I thank you very much for that question, and I, and I wholly agree with that, that our decisions have to be data-driven, they have to be supported, and they have to be, you know, the correct decisions. I mean, there's, there's, you know, I always believe there's, you know, your opinion, my opinion, and the right opinion, or the correct opinion, and that's where we want to land. So thank you very much for the question.
Student trustee McGuire?
Thank you, and through you, Chair. I just wanted to congratulate trustee Saunders on putting his name forward. That's really great. I just wanted to ask, as in the role of Chair and stuff, presiding over meetings, it's very important that we get through the agenda within our meetings and stuff, and often we do have quite lengthy agendas, and our Board has done a really great job at ensuring that we move through all of our agenda items within our meeting times. I was just wondering, how do you continue, want to continue, and what strategies you will use to continue this effectiveness within our meetings?
Well, I think Chair Duarte has set a good standard for that. I think he, the agenda is clear. We, we, we move through it as quickly as possible. We do give everyone an opportunity to speak, that's absolutely critical. But I think a clear agenda with sort of a push to move forward, I think that's, that's the way it is now, and that would be what I would continue. So I think compliments to Chair Duarte. The meetings have moved as quickly forward as they can, and I will continue doing that.
Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. My question would be to, the role as a Chair, it's supposed to be nonpartisan, so you mentioned to sticking to facts a lot, but how will you, as a Chair, ensure that you will stay nonpartisan as a Chair with no bias and maintaining decorum both in and outside of the Board?
Well, that is, that is what I've done thus far. I mean, we, my behavior outside the Board has always been supportive. I understand that the Board makes a decision and you become, that becomes your decision. So that has been my approach. I've had opportunities to speak to many people outside the, the Board, I've been invited to many meetings, and my position is I support the Board's decision. You know, you know what? That's, that's our job. Within meetings, I think as a Chair, you step back and you realize that your job is to make sure that everyone gets heard, everyone has their opportunity to speak, and then in the end you vote. And I think you vote the way you feel, so that, that'll be the way the Board will run. Everyone will be at their opportunity, everyone will say what they have to do. In the end, we vote, and the vote carries it, and as a member of the, the Board, you board, you, that becomes the board's decision, and you have to carry that forward.
Thank you, everyone.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, follow up?
Oh, yes. Trustee Kelly, go ahead.
With that being said, how would you manage public opinion, especially with a controversial topic that's been discussing at the board? As chair, you would be able to represent the board?
Yeah. So so in terms of, as I said before, so the the board chair represents the board, they don't represent themselves. So I would take, you know, the guidance, the vote from the board, move that forward, and that would be our position. I don't think there's any wiggle room to sort of move away from that. So the board makes a decision, that becomes the decision of the board, and you represent the board. So that would be how I would deal with issues on the outside.
Taking a look here electronically to see if any hands are raised and seeing physically. I don't see any other hands are raised as well. So I thank all of you for that contribution. As was noted earlier, should a vote by secret ballot become necessary this evening, student Trustee McGuire and the superintendents, I noted earlier, Superintendent Donofo and Bakich will act as scrutineers, and Superintendent Lawson and myself will tabulate the ballots. I have in front of me some ballots. I'm going to ask Superintendent Lawson if he could hand those to each of the trustees who are able to vote here. And then I just ask my colleagues here if we just take up positions. And then I will give it a few minutes, and then I will come by and pick up the ballots, fold them, and they're folded. I think that's the international signal for you're done. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and for your engagement and contribution. Trustee Duarte is declared Chair of the Halton Catholic District School Board for the period November 21, 2023, to the first board meeting in November of 2024. All in favor of the motion to nominate Trustee Duarte to the position of Chair of the Board? All in favor? All opposed? Mr. Chair, do you wish to address the meeting?
Thank you, trustees, for your confidence in me. It is my privilege. First of all, I want to thank Trustee Saunders for putting your name forward. Really appreciate that. It is my honor and privilege once again to serve as the chair of the board, at the will of the board for the third, for my third term. As I said before, I do understand the time constraints, and I will provide you and our staff and the taxpayers the same or better level of services from me. Board meetings will continue to be well organized and conducted well, as I know trustees want that, and I will work towards efficient board meetings. Here is that I'm really excited, and that's about our new multi-year strategic plans I talked about. It's being rolled out in January once again. And I assure you that our, this will be our focus, driving everything we do or say at the HCSB. The multi-year strategic plan is not just a document, but it's a roadmap that we will, that will guide us through the evolving landscape of education at HCSB. We will work collaboratively, and I'll put every effort into getting everybody to work collaboratively, collaboratively, to ensure that every decision we make aligns with our overarching goal, to provide a world-class education that equips every student with the skills and knowledge they need to thrive and succeed. Our regional school visits for trustees will continue, and this is important to help trustees make budgetary decisions. I want to share something with you which will touch and surely melt your hearts at this point in time. Last Friday, Director Klein, Trustee Murphy, and myself had the chance to visit St. Peter's Elementary in Milton. Two great, two great seven youth leaders, Archibald and Isabella, gave us a professional tour of the school and presented us with this thank you card, trustees. This this card was signed by each and every student at St. Peter's School. This is exactly why I signed up to be a trustee. This is the leadership shown by our students at St. Peter's School. How cool is that? And this card is not for just those trustees who visited. This card is for all of us. The students do appreciate the work trustees do in our schools. And once again, this motivates me, and I shall leave the card here. Yes, please pass it around, Trustee O'Hern Chernotta. This is wonderful, and it touched my heart so much. And thank you to the work done by our educational, our staff, teachers, principals. This is what I signed up for. Professional development for trustees is extremely important, as I said before. We have had several sessions in the past few months. We have lined up some more sessions over the year. Interesting topics coming up, including governance, which is very important for the work that we do. Attending this PD sessions will give us a better understanding of the working of our school system. It's a very important, important role for us. We have seen many new program initiatives which have come to fruition this year, the growth of the AP program in Burlington and Milton, the IB program coming up in Milton, the specialized STEM programs, the sports programs that's seen effects, the math and STEM initiatives across our system. I will not diminish the other programs that we have, all the wonderful initiatives and programs. But but I will ask trustees that you stay focused on promoting and growing these programs. These are the programs that will automatically grow our enrollment in our system. Your cooperation and collaboration is now being solicited, and I will make every effort to earn your trust. My relationship with you will be professional, respectful, fair, and with utmost integrity. I look to your active involvement and participation in moving the business of this board forward. This is our job, trustees. Finally, trustees, I have this unique opportunity, as trustees, we have this unique opportunity to make the difference in the education and lives of our students. My vision for this year is crystal clear, and I will work towards two things. First is that all staff focus on what they do best, providing education for our students. We will stay away from micromanaging our staff and operations. We will also get better at filtering out external noise and stray, stay true to our HCSB mission, that we will channel all our energies, the laser focus on reading, writing, arithmetic, and our Catholic faith, to bring the best in every area and aspect of our education for students, once again, being curricular or extracurricular, and all those within our pillars of achieving, believing, and belonging, as I said before. We shall achieve this vision by drawing strength from our foundation of Catholic faith through prayer, discernment, and guidance of the Holy Spirit. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair Duarte. It's a motion now to destroy the ballots. We have resolved that the ballots be destroyed. I need a mover for that. Trustee Carabella and a seconder, Trustee O'Hern Chernotta. And I'm going to, we had a couple of extras, so I'm going to throw that in the mix, too, Election of the Vice Chair of the Board. We will now proceed to the election of the Vice Chair of the Board for the period November 21, 2023, to the first board meeting of November 2024. Should a vote by secret ballot become necessary this evening, those who assisted me earlier will reunite to do so once again. According to our board bylaws, a nomination motion for the position of Chair, of Vice Chair, must be duly moved and seconded and received by myself. I will now ask for nominations to come forward, and I'm going to keep my eye on a couple of things. I see Trustee Duarte.
Thank you, Chair. It's my pleasure to nominate Trustee Agnew for the position of Vice Chair.
Trustee Agnew, and it's moved by Trustee Duarte. We need a seconder for that.
I can second it.
Sorry, Trustee Powell?
Sorry.
Seconded that. Trustee Agnew, do you accept the nomination for the position of Vice Chair of the Board?
Yes, through you, I accept. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations?
Thank you. I move to nominate Trustee Murphy for Vice Chair.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Does Trustee Murphy accept the nomination for the position of Vice Chair of the Board?
I do, thank you.
Thank you. Are there, are there any more nominations for the position of Vice Chair of the School Board? That can call to see if there are any other nominations. Third and final call. Seeing none, seeing no further nomination, more, no further nominations, I request a mover and a seconder to close the nominations for the position of Vice Chair of the Board. So the resolution, be it resolved, that the nominations be closed.
Yes.
That's moved by Trustee Saunders and seconded by Trustee Duarte. I would now like to give each nominee for Vice Chair an opportunity, if they wish, to say a few words and allow trustees to ask any questions of the candidate prior to a vote. I will start as before with the first nominee in this sequence, and that is Trustee Agnew. You have the floor.
Thank you very much and through you. I don't have a big piece to say, unlike the nominations, the nominees for Chair. It's been my absolute pleasure to serve as a Vice Chair for the last number of years. I take the role very seriously in supporting the Chair, assisting where required, always ready to step in if need be in the absence of the Chair. You know, I'm always, again, very, very happy to support, and I always offer assistance where required. I'm happy to help anybody that asks. I'm active in our school communities. I take on every opportunity I can to be involved, to encourage others to be involved, to, again, to assist others if they have goals that they like to achieve in their roles as trustees. So again, I've been very honored and very privileged to be in this position. I take it very seriously, and I would love the opportunity to do that again. So I just wanted to thank you very much for the nomination, and sharp and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. As before, this is an opportunity for any other trustees to pose any questions of Trustee Agnew. Trustee Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Trustee Agnew, just wanting, any thoughts on maybe just some of the main priorities you think we should, you see that we maybe should be focusing on this, or anything you want to get behind to to move, move the the board forward for the next fiscal year?
So thank you very much for the question. So certainly, again, always, and I don't mean this to be sort of cop out, but, you know, certainly to what the will of the board is, you know, we often have motions that come forward to us, we have policies that need to be reviewed. And so, again, certainly, I'm happy to get behind those. Our multi-year strategic plan is certainly of tremendous focus. A lot of work has gone into the development of that plan. We've all been involved with that. I think it's imperative that we stay true to making sure that that plan is rolled out, that we are fully supportive of it, that we can support staff in any way. You know, I'm always very, very invested, obviously, in accessibility and inclusion for our students, making sure that our students have what they need, making sure that staff is supported. It's hard to talk about in advance of things that make up that I'm not aware of, but making sure that our budget is where it needs to be, making sure that I'm providing governance as required. And again, you know, trying to do my very best to be as collaborative as I can as we move the business of the board ahead. I want to see us do great things together. I want to see us look back and be really proud of our accomplishments. I want to make sure that staff is supported, and again, that our school communities feel supported. So I don't mean to dance around it at all, Trustee Kennedy, but it's hard to predict what's going to come. But certainly, like I said, those things, the multi-year strategic plan, our budget is very important, taking a look at capital priorities, and seeing what staff brings forward, that they need our assistance with, to make sure that we can do the best that we can to make our schools as as productive as possible.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Thank you for the question. Trustee Kennedy, next in line is Trustee Saunders. Go ahead.
Yeah, for for Trustee Agnew, I'm just wondering, are you committed to having the budget balanced for the coming year?
So I'm not sure that that's... So I'm not sure that that's in line with my role as a Vice Chair. Uh, I'm certainly committed to making sure that we are providing the utmost endeavorance, that we are listening to what staff is bringing forward to us. I also have tremendous faith in the competence of our staff to bring forward to us. The budget, as they have reviewed it, for us to review and ask the questions of, I definitely am committed to taking a deep dive. Um, so yeah, as a balanced budget, important, a hundred percent. Who doesn't want to have a balanced budget? I'd love to see us in that situation. But if they're determinists that have left us in a situation where we do not have a balanced budget, provided that our staff has a handle on it, that they have a full understanding of what is exactly transpiring, that we don't have any gaps, that we can't have something there that's not been identified, that we can't have an answer to something, I want to dig into that a little bit more. I think people that know me know that I'm not afraid to ask the questions. I'm not afraid to put things in front of people for consideration. I don't have a problem with any of those pieces. So yeah, a balanced budget would be great. If that's not something that we are able to achieve immediately, then something that we definitely have to work for. I've been in a, I've been part of a Board that had a balanced budget. It's a great feeling to be in and I'd like to see us get there again. But again, from the role of the Vice Chair, um, I have to do my best job as I can as a trustee first and the Vice Chair as well in that capacity. So as a trustee, yes, I'd love to see that.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Just taking a look to see if there are any more questions. And seeing none, we will proceed to a vote as we did a little while ago. So I'd asked my, uh, oops, sorry. Uh, I'm sorry. I was looking electronically here, trustee Murphy. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, trustee Carabella, for the, uh, for the nomination. I, I appreciate it. I appreciate the confidence in me. Again, I don't have a big spiel either, um, except to say that if I become Vice Chair, I'm prepared to do this role diligently, um, to represent the Board with decorum and respect, you know, everyone that I come into contact with as a representative of the Board. I believe I'll also take on the role with eagerness. You know, I think that many of us here are capable of these roles and I think it's important that we're all given the opportunity to, um, to be given these opportunities, to learn and grow, and I think we all have unique talents. So with that said, I, um, I'd also like to mention too that I do understand the role of, of Vice Chair per the Education Act and I, I appreciate your thoughtful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Uh, as we had earlier, this opportunity for some questions and I do see trustee Kennedy, your hand is up. Go ahead.
Just to be fair, just want to ask the same question. Any priorities you'd like to get behind or you see we should be getting behind for the next fiscal year, this fiscal year?
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. I think that it's a balance of obviously, you know, governance. That was, you know, um, I was elected on a platform of transparency with a commitment to academic excellence. So I think that balancing, you know, not micromanaging at an operational level with also asking all the hard questions and getting clarity so that our stakeholders understand that we are taking their concerns seriously. And so with that said too, I think just an increased presence, for me, an increased presence in the schools and talking to students and, um, teachers and all the stakeholders involved is very important to me so I can get like a bigger picture of the higher level issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do see trustee Saunders has raised his hand. Go ahead.
Sorry, also in the interest of fairness, what is your, uh, are you committed to a balanced budget and i- can you elaborate on that?
Thank you, trustee Saunders. I would sort of echo what trustee Agnew said in that, um, you know, I can't actually balance the budget myself, but for my role as trustee, I am definitely committed to understanding and not just voting on something that I don't have all the answers to. And I think that for me digging into the budget and understanding it more and where the gaps are and ensuring that our students ultimately are not losing out in the classroom, that that's, um, that's a core goal for me in terms of having a budget that is balanced. Thank you.
Trustee O'Hern Chernata, you have a question?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And trustee Murphy, thank you for putting your name forward. Trustee Agnew, I don't, I've been working with trustee Agnew for a few years, so I, I don't need to ask those questions. But I guess, coming into this role and putting your name forward, what do you think, what is your perception of the most challenging part of being a Vice Chair would be? What do you foresee that to be?
Um, I think the challenges of being a Vice Chair are very similar of being a trustee, right? There's all those roles that are involved. But, um, for me, there's probably a little bit more learning to do, which I'm, I've been, you know, studying the policies and the bylaws. And so I think that obviously trustee Agnew has probably a bit of a leg up on me on that. But, um, collaborating with the Chair, being available for the Chair, should he be unable to attend something, and I think just like I have a fairly good relationship with, um, trust, uh, Chair Duarte. So yeah, I hope I answered your question.
Thank you, uh, trustee Saunders.
I'm just wondering, could you sort of describe, what would you do to sort of bring the Board together to bridge any gaps? What, what is your philosophy and what, what do you think you'd be able to do to, to, to work towards that?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, trustee Saunders. I think really it boils down to relationships and I think that, you know, um, collaboration, asking, uh, asking questions, getting clarity, um, giving people the benefit of the doubt, assuming everyone has the best intentions, I think is super important. Instead of assuming someone has some sort of malintent, I certainly don't take that approach. Asking questions does not necessarily mean that I'm assuming malintent of another person. I think it's just me trying to balance, like I said, governance whilst also building relationships and trying to understand the bigger picture and ultimately working for the greater good of the HCDSB.
All right, thank you, everyone. Not seeing any more hands up. Draw the question period to a close. We are now going to, as we did earlier, proceed to a vote by secret ballot on the resolution for the appointment of the position of Vice Chair to the Board. I'd asked my colleagues to reassemble. We have the ballots that I took out and we will begin that process right now. Thank you. All right, thank you. We're gonna have a motion to destroy the ballots resolved, that the ballots be destroyed. We need someone to move that.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. Our first order of business is Item Five, Presentations. Item 5.1, Senior Staff Updates. Director Klein, please introduce a presentation on the Supervised Alternative Learning Program. Director Klein.
Thank you, Chair. Second and Honorable Superintendent Osorio, when it comes to commitment for student achievement and for pathways to those realms of achievement. So I'm going to turn it over to him right now to give us a fine report on this.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, I am honored and pleased to really inform the Board about the Supervised Alternative Learning Program, also known as SAL. And SAL is literally a program designed for very few kids who have a chronic absentee problem and they don't attend school. And there's a myriad of reasons why. But we know that chronic absenteeism is a complex issue and that it has multiple causes. Elizabeth? When you think about supervised alternative learning, here is how it's made up. You have a board committee and who sits on that board committee. And then you have presenters at each meeting that we meet with the families. You have an opportunity here to now start to really diagnose the student's issue and how we might be able to respond. For the Board has the responsibility to ensure appropriateness of placements off school property or off-board property. So for some activities that students are taking in order to get to their goals, be it a well-being, it takes place off-site. Then a site visit will take place to make sure that everything complies with health and safety and for accessibility requirements. Every SAL student needs to develop also a plan with goals and a timeline. And every school has to create a plan and a timeline in collaboration with the student, the doctor, as well as the parents. And they bring that plan and we add to it. So we become the educational experts at that table. And we sit down and we look at the diagnoses and we look at the issues and all the strategies that we have that can really support the student and all the programs that we have. It can only last for a semester and then they have to come back for a renewal. We have to monitor. So for accountability and transparency, we always monitor the plans and we get feedback and then we adjust to see how we can further support the students. And they will be renewed for a maximum of one school year on the recommendation of the principal of the school and the SAL committee without requiring the students to appear before the committee after the year. Elizabeth? The question about SAL in terms of the Education Act, when a student turns 18, because SAL is for a student who's 14 to 18. So if we have an 18-year-old, while they're participating in SAL and they turn 19, they can finish off the SAL. So it's not that we, you know, now treat them as an adult. They finish off the SAL with the supports they do and then we create another plan for them as an adult learner with the supports that we have through the Merton program. Elizabeth? So if we ask what is supervised alternative learning? It really is used for students who are not otherwise excused under Section 21 of the Education Act. It's intended to be used by a very small group of students. So this is really for those very hard-to-serve students who, for, again, a myriad of reasons, are not coming to school. And we work to really help remove whatever barriers are in place. The primary goal of SAL is to offer a program that is in the student's best interest, reflects his or her or their input and supports the student in meeting his or her or their goals. The program could refer students to professional counseling, to therapies, to work and social opportunities with a reduced school timetable and/or coursework. School attendance impacts a child's mental health, their peer relationships, the home relationships, spirituality and the overall well-being. So that's what we triage. We triage whatever diagnosis the student has and then we think about how we can support them through these diagnoses or through the situation that they're in and really provide a lot of hope. So the synonymous to SAL is hope. We provide hope for every family that comes. And the purpose is to assist these students to either to return to school or to proceed to one of the five post-secondary options if they reach the age of 18. So part of the plan is we start to triage student interests and find out what their pathway or goal is. Then we, after 18 years of old, continue to work with them on that pathway plan to meet their goals or their interests. Elizabeth? We often refer to SAL as a Tier Three program. So this visual can really help you understand. Before we consider excusal from schools, these are some school-based opportunities that the student has. We know that research has shown repeatedly that the number-one impact on any student's education is the classroom teacher. So that's the most bang for your buck. You have the biggest impact in the classroom. So that's the bottom tier. And we have a lot of programs in the classroom to help and support teachers. And teachers do a great catch-all to really see how they could work with the parents to get the students to come. Once the teacher exhausts all of those opportunities, they will then go to the principal of the school and start talking about the student is missing a lot of classes. We need to start working with them and we connect with the family to find other para-professionals in the Board, like our social workers. And we start to think about how we can build a relationship with the student so that the student could work with a caring adult to overcome whatever they're faced and get to their goals or interest. And so you'll start to notice then the Board interventions that we have, which is really second tier. And those would be the CYCs, our chaplains, our social workers, our para-professionals, the custodians in the building, as well as our commissioners. They all have relationships with kids. And if a kid connects with this, an adult in the building, we use that adult to leverage how we can continue to encourage the student to come. And so the idea of having a caring adult in the building speaks to hope. And it speaks to a student who comes to school knowing that there will always be this one individual there. That's when you look at the top tier, the level. At this point, schools will then apply to my office and would put in an application which they work with the social worker, the student success teacher, the family doctor and the parents to really look at, if it's a diagnosis of mental health, for example, what is in the best interest of this student? And this is where we think oftentimes you'll have a student not take a class, but will be going into therapies during the school day, because that's what they need in order for them to overcome barriers in their life. And that's the Tier Three program, because we work with very few kids at that tier level, because the goal is we want them to return to school. We want them to go back into the classroom, because we know the biggest impact on student achievement is the relationship with the teacher and the strategies the teacher uses to really support the student's needs. Elizabeth? This diagram, as Elizabeth will populate it, really speaks to, the child is within our system and everything is really about the child. And we center everything on the child. We then connect with the parents. And oftentimes, parents will be exhausted in terms of everything that they could do to help or support their child to get to school. And so we team up with the parent. And that's when we look at community supports. And then we look at the school team and we start to now come together as a group of professionals that look to serve the student's needs and that are aligned. Again, the most important role is the teacher's role in classroom. Once they're all exhausted, we continue to see what schools have. Social work comes into play. And then I'll talk about how the social worker is really instrumental, because they write a social worker report that comes to my office. And what happens is, once a month, we meet. So I would individually go through every application, every diagnosis, every medical report and the proposed plan. And I would think of other things to consider. And then we meet with the chief social worker, Patricia Carter. And the two of us will now compare each other's notes on those applications and see if we missed anything. And then we say, we still have these questions before we meet. And so we then connect with the school principal or vice-principal who put the package or application together. And we would say, we need more information or we need this from the family doctor, because if we're going to excuse it, we have to have evidence that there is excusal. And so that evidence is really the doctor's note. And so that we can then start thinking about community programs. This is why we have a community member sit on it. And our community member is Donna Hilton, who is an employment developer at Sheridan College. And so we work with her to see how we can support students in particular pathways. And she represents that community piece. Elizabeth? As I mentioned earlier, in terms of every student has to have a plan, part of that is that they come here and the student speaks to it. But I need to let you also know that there are some students who will not meet with us because they have phobias. Or they won't go online. So oftentimes, they will be off-camera and they would either talk through a parent or a caregiver, or they will talk but not on screen. These are students that have goals in mind, know that they have barriers in their life and are excited that we are here to provide them with hope and a game plan that is short enough and chunked out so that they could meet with success. But at the same time, it's allowed for the student to grow. So here you have some examples of the plan. It does have educational as well as personal goals that the student outlines. It includes credit-bearing activities wherever possible. We always try to, when we go through a diagnosis, to see if we could work on credits. And what is the student very successful in now? And that's where my office comes into play, because through student success, we know that 14 out of the 30 credits to earn an Ontario secondary school diploma can be earned through co-op. So we become very creative in how we can support this student in the world of work, while the second part of their day is, if they're not in therapies, they are with an employer so that they are working towards a pathway of employment from school to work. And so we look for those activities. The other one outlines methods of assessing the student's progress towards his or her or their educational and personal goals. So how are we going to really measure that? And that's where the principal and the social worker and the team comes together with the family to say, what would be some indications to us when you come back to let us know where you've met with success? Oftentimes, those are meetings that are had with the social worker or someone who has that connection with the student. And then they report it as part of the meetings that we have. Another one is identify a primary contact at the school or the Board and make provisions for monitoring, which might occur at minimum once per month. And that's really the check-ins that are really important. And we also include a transition report for returning to school or proceeding to a post-secondary option when the student reaches the age of 18. Elizabeth? So when you're thinking about what are some of the activities that these kids look at, some of the things that we can consider are, you know, enrollment in one or more courses in which the student may earn a credit. So we really start thinking about getting them credits. And again, it really depends on the situation, the diagnosis. The enrollment in life skills or other non-credit courses pending the profile of the student. Job-related training, i.e. earning a workplace certificate or certifications and developing general employment skills. So for example, if we know that a student wants to go into the trades, for example, this is where we start to think about programs that they have at the school, like a Shizm program or OYAP. If the student isn't ready for those yet, then we think if that's going to be a goal in a couple of years, let's start getting WIMIS training. Let's get all those certifications so that when they go into the world of work, it's a smooth transition. The other part is full or part-time employment at work placement that has been visited or found appropriate. Oftentimes, kids don't come, so we need to, and they won't take a class. But we know that they're working on some particular barrier. And so what we do is, again, the first thing is based on student interest. If their interest is in work, we try to see if we can get them like co-op at that job, so that this way here, we have a co-op teacher attached to that placement that would really look at supporting the student while they're working to also get high school credits, because again, 14 out of 30 credits could be earned through co-op if you're going in that particular pathway. Right? Also volunteering. So if students want to volunteer as part of their well-being, because they can't attend school, but they rather go over here and they can do that, then we start working on, again, if it's about peer relationships or social relationships. There's a lot of therapies involved as well. So counseling to address the barriers to learning is something that we make as part of the plan. So it's an activity that they would continue to go to counseling two or three times for the week and work on the following. So when they come back, they tell us how they're doing, or we also get an update if possible. Or any other activity that really is there to support the child. And this is where we become very creative within what we can do in student success and really start thinking about what can we offer the student right now to continue to inspire them to understand the value of an education, particularly a diploma and the doors that it can open. Elizabeth? If we're asking about, we as a team or committee realize we don't have enough evidence for the student to be excused, we don't have a medical note or we don't have, you know, an employment, there isn't a real solid plan, for whatever reason, this is just the process to show you that a parent can, within 20 school days of the day of the committee, receives a request for reconsideration. And then the committee shall hold a meeting to reconsider its decision. And so this is where we go even a little bit deeper to say, okay, what do the parents believe we didn't focus on for us to reconsider it? We have yet to exercise that, because by the time they come to us, having gone through all the application at the school level, then it comes to my office. My first reading of the application and diagnosis and then triaging a program, then the social worker, and then we combine together to see where we are. And then we meet with the school administration before we And then we can, we meet with the school administration before we have. There's that, a lot of work to be done so that we don't arrive to this piece here. But this is just to let you know in case a parent can do uh move forward. Uh Elizabeth? So if we look at um where we are in the SAL program now, I just wanted to pull some data for you because like research, I too like data. And so if we look at twenty nineteen to twenty uh twenty, in that year, we had sixteen new SAL application students. And out of that sixteen, three of them were renewed for an extra year. If you look at the COVID period, we also had kids who were not attending online. And there was a myriad of reasons. We had nine students and then one renewal. Then if you look at twenty twenty-two, you see that we have six and then we start to do re- to renewal. And then we start to look at last year where we're starting to see a number of mental health concerns coming to the schools. And teachers have exhausted all the strategies and all the professional development that they received to really engage students. And so that they continue to move forward in that particular direction. Um and currently, we have seven. If you look at the next slide, this is what the breakdown is, really to show you that the blue is the home instruction. This is where some kids are on a reduced timetable, but they're focusing on their credits. So they're either taking a course where we send a teacher uh to their home or a public area for three and a half hours once a week. And they work on a particular course and that teacher assesses and the teacher builds that connection with them. The yellow you'll see there is mental health. So the next largest area that we serve are kids who have a number of barriers and diagnoses and anxieties and depression that prevents them from coming to school. And this is what we can do to support them. And then you have some that have reduced timetable. And then some, like I mentioned, is that we connect into the world of work. So they go to job youth connection that really helps them look at skills and really align them to make sure that their programs or the programs that they have in place really support the student's best interest. Uh next slide, Elizabeth? These are the key messages. So what we wanna really stress when we talk about SAL is the fact that everyone has a role to play in it. And that role is really supporting the student, that the foundation of success at school is attending regularly. And these are kids who don't. So we know that and the evidence shows that the greatest indicator is the relationships with those that they engage at the school level. And that could be anyone. And so we know that as well. So that's why, as I showed you, that one diagram as a tier three, the goal of it is while we are serving them and giving them a program and a plan, the goal is to reintegrate them back into uh the classroom because we know that that's foundational for them. School climate is impacted when students are not engaged in the school community. And this is what we often hear when kids, you will hear this, like either go to school but never go to class. And so we start to chip away at what exactly is there. And that's where, again, now I'm asking you to think of that visual of the circles that were um much like an onion at the core. If that's the child, what information can we gather from the parents and the community and the social? So this is where we start to triage, right? That when all students are engaged in learning, the entire school benefits. And early intervention really improves the outcome for a student. And that's where it's really imperative that we meet and we really have the diagnoses and we start to think about all the resources we have at the board level to support the student. And that student absence is an indicator of a larger concern such as mental health or poor peer relationships or academic challenges. Families or or issues, for example, come to play. Oftentimes, um cases could be involved where families break up and students fall apart and they just fall apart. And so they will come to a SAL and we will help uh give a plan to get them back on track. And then the next message. So when we think about our family of school, social worker and how they can assist, they're vital. They're incredibly important in this process here. Because not only the skills that the social worker has and the expertise that the social worker has, but it's really that relational uh piece that's the most important. Oftentimes, the therapies that kids want are through the social worker. And that social worker would be the one that will continue to connect with the student to help them with whatever uh strategy they need. But you will start to see that they can assist with compulsory school age, the attendance prolonged and habitual. Support for students and their families, that's your go-between when parents are really exhausted. A social worker is so vital in the relationship uh of um the family unit at this point. Or crisis intervention, um advocacy for mental health supports for the students, facilitation of referrals to the community agencies. This is where we think about all the different agencies that we have within our region that we can access so that we can support the child with therapies or counseling or work or something else that we have in the community. They are also really there to conduct and support the process for alternative programs such as the change program at Merton that we have to help kids stay engaged in school while they're young but work on a number of other issues with the paraprofessionals that are in that program um as well as SAL, right? And that they have system navigation, um service orientation and coordination and support to families. Oftentimes, what we find is a barrier that families don't know how to navigate the education system. And that's where the social worker, because of that relational piece, helps the parents navigate the system so that this way the parents are completely supported and feel the hope that they have. And the next slide. Here is the procedure that you can see that principals uh work through at the school level, really to put a SAL package together. And then when it comes to my office and then when it goes to the committee. And then the next slide is really an opportunity for me to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you Superintendent Del Sordo. Trustees, if we have questions, I see one hand up. Trustee Ohan Chino, you have the floor.
Thank you and through you, uh Chair Dwork. Superintendent Del Sordo, as you know, I'm the trustee this year that's lucky enough to sit on this committee. And without being too metaphorical or melodramatic, my love bucket gets filled up every time I attend one of this meeting and I'm not even kidding. This is like a virtual hug that is given to the students and the parents that even though the numbers are small, to that parent and to that family, that one is the most important thing at all. We all know as parents, guardians, aunts, uncles, grandfathers, grandmothers, that when your child is struggling, that's probably the worst thing that you could experience in your life. So this committee just wraps its metaphorical arms around these families and the childrens. And when the the parents come on camera, I truly suggest that other trustees get a chance to sit on this committee as well. Because when you see their faces, when whatever the plan is has been approved, you can feel them take a deep breath. So I'm truly indebted to yourself and to all the committee because you guys are the experts. But this is a huge nugget in our school board and it's amazing and I'm proud of you all.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chino. Up next is Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and through you. Yeah, this sounds really great. I've not, I'm surprised. I've not heard of this. It's amazing. I have a couple of questions, but the main thing is, can a parent expedite this um application in any way? Or do they have to go through those processes that you outlined? Like if a parent already has a doctor's note, um is there a way that they can go ahead and and ask the board for this combination?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the question, uh Trustee Murphy. So when we think about the tier three process, what we wanna do is exhaust all the resources that we have in tier one and tier two. And so it's not that we jump from tier one to tier three unless all of a sudden we have evidence that this has to happen now. So everything is really triaged. But what I really wanna suggest as a key message is that there are a lot of strategies and a lot of resources in tier one and tier two that really help actually navigate and support the parents so that they don't get to SAL. So that's why, again, that social worker piece and the school principal or the student success teacher are vital because of the relationship. They talk about everything that they've done at the school level and exhausted that have either worked or not worked. And they are the ones that would actually be the ones to talk to the parents, say, you know what, we should go to a tier three because this is what we've gathered in the process of really trying all these interventions.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy.
Yeah, thank you. That that makes a lot of sense. Thank you so much. The other thing I want to ask about, is it okay if I have another question or? Is I'm just wondering, do you have any information on the rate of return to school for these students? Like are are they going through a whole year or like is there any information on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Got excited. I was gonna bypass that process. I always wanted to have a talk show, I feel like, late night with the boardroom. Now I forgot the question.
Shall I repeat it?
Line.
I'll repeat it.
Sorry.
No, through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Del Sordo. I I was asking about the rate of return to school. Do you have any like metrics?
Ah yes.
Let's do it again.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the question, Trustee Murphy. The slide that I showed you uh earlier, and I'm not sure if we can go back, but it showed you, we had sixteen and then the renewal. The renewal would be the ones that have come back, the ones that haven't come back, so you see the drop. They're back into school or the world of work or on a pathway, so they've grown, you know, we're getting them on a different program. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Up next is Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And and not a question, but just a comment. Similar to trustee Ohansorota, I've actually heard from parents before whose children have benefited from this program. And and much like you had referenced earlier, there's sometimes at a point where and just the successes that the students have had and that, you know, parents want to see their children succeed. And they're often sometimes in a situation where they're having a really hard time trying to make that happen. Um and so, you know, the success that the students are seeing through this program and the feeling that parents have knowing that these children are being supported in the way that they are, that they're seeing these great successes and that they have some hope for the future. You know, is truly remarkable. So really just a comment on, you know, people that I have heard who have had uh students have gone through with just, it's made, it really literally has made a difference in their life and they move forward. So just wanted to comment on.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I see no other hands up. So Superintendent Del Sordo, uh thank you so much for your presentation and uh keep up the great work uh that you do with the superintendent with the supervised alternate learning uh program. Thanks so much. Our next order of business is uh delegations, we have none, consent agenda. Item seven, can we have that up on screen? Okay, yes, we do have that. Uh the following items have been agreed upon at the agenda approval to stay on the consent agenda. Action item seven point one, seven point one point one, uh seven point one point two. Uh that consists of seven point one point two point one, seven point one point two point two. The other two items have been asked to be removed. The noted items uh are in the package. Uh the consent agenda uh has been broken on a good scene. There will be a single motion to approve the action items and there will be no discussion. There will be no discussion on the noted items as well. I will now read the motion. Resolve that the Holland Catholic Catholic District School Board approve cons- sorry. Uh I I shall now read the motion. Resolve that the Holland Catholic District School Board approve consent agenda item seven point one point one and seven point one point two. Seven point one point two, which consists of seven point which consists of seven point one point two point one, seven point one point two point two. Uh on November twenty twenty-three, as submitted. May I have a mover for these items? Sorry. Won by trustee Ohan Chino. Seconded by, looking for a second please. Seconded by trustee Agnew. There will be no discussion on this item and I shall take it to a recorded vote. Uh trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chino.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders. Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee uh McGuire.
In favor.
Uh trustee Carabella.
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries. We shall move on uh directly to uh action items, which is our next order of business, item number ten. Before we dive into our action items, we have several of them. I would like to review the rules for everyone's benefit once again. Uh as the section items have come from committees, uh some of them have come from committees, we will deal with them as a motion. We will start off with question period. Trustees will have three minutes to ask questions for clarification purposes. And then we'll have three minutes for debates. At that point in time, we will take any amendments. And that is as per bylaw ten point four. Okay? So first item ten point one, draft twenty twenty-two, twenty-three audited financial statements, Superintendent Lofts. And team, can you present the draft audited statements, please?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Uh I'd like to start off actually by acknowledging the hard work of the finance team. Uh small but mighty team, Adam Cross, uh Cheryl Del Rumpel, Andrew Chapling, Chapling and Rebecca Albers. Uh many late nights, weekends went into this, so thank you, everyone. I also want, sorry, computer's kinda messing up all of a sudden. Trustees, trustees, today I present to you the twenty-two, twenty-three draft audited financial statements for review. Uh as a note, these statements uh were presented last Thursday at the audit committee meeting and were unanimously unanimously approved. Our audit committee is comprised of two external members, Michael Gore uh and um Kyle Schneider, as well as three trustees, trustee Ohansorota, trustee Kennedy and trustee Saunders. And I'd like to just address, I too would have liked to have had a small surplus to present to you tonight. Um but it's been mentioned many times throughout this past year, it was a very challenging budget year for us. Um we're seeing declining enrollment for the first time in many years. Um it's something now that's a reality to us. Um last year, when we were doing our budget, initially we had forecasted enrollment to be higher, not large increases, but at least some small increases. Uh but at time revised estimates came around in December. Uh our elementary enrollment was down four hundred and four students from what we planned it to be in this, in the summertime uh in the, in June, as well as our secondary enrollment was down two hundred and twenty-eight. So there's six hundred and thirty-one students that we were down, approximately six point three or so million dollars in lost revenue. But in addition to that, and these are things we've talked about before, we actually talked about a lot at the um at the budget, the twenty-two, twenty-three, our twenty-three, twenty-four budget back, we improved back in June. Um the other side of the equation is our teaching staff, which we know um when you have, when you, we do your estimates in the springtime and you hire in the springtime and the students don't arrive and do not come in the fall, that's a cost that we have to incur for the whole year. So not only do we have less revenue coming in, significantly less revenue coming in, we also had higher expenditures. Uh again, we've talked about this before, but I just thought it was important to bring that up again. Um another part too is something we've been talking about before as well, things that have relative, have changed relatively recently. Uh we've lost a million dollars in interest income. We have CPP and EI that we are now responsible for, that we weren't responsible for before and we're not being funded for, and there's another million dollars. Um transportation, transportation costs are going up and we uh through board motion have elected to transport all of our optional program, or at least not all of our optional program, but a part of our optional programming, which is a million dollars in costs there. Uh in addition to losing revenue that we thought we would have with enrollment uh and that has not changed, it seems like enrollment is not as robust as it was at one time. Uh so these are things that we need to address as a board. So having said that, so having said that, I'd also wanna make make everyone aware that we had been forecasting a three point nine million dollar deficit, which was a compliant deficit. Four point nine is where we came in at. Uh we were a non-compliant deficit. Uh as soon as staff became aware of this, we contacted our financial officer at the ministry as required. Following this, we contacted Dylan Johnson, who's a project manager of audit, who is also part of the financial analysis and accountability branch of the Ministry of Education. Mister Johnson requested additional information from staff, which staff provided. And this was the response, we received the response from the ministry, from Dylan Johnson, the project uh manager of audit, uh that the ministry uh approval is not required for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year, that we should continue to monitor and reexamine our employee future benefits. Now, this is a main part of why we were in the deficit we were. Adam will have a, he's gonna do a presentation and that'll be a slide on that presentation. Um and for us to look at our cost assumptions for twenty-three and twenty-four revised estimates. And if at the time we become aware of a deficit uh or a non-compliant deficit, to let the ministry know as soon as possible. Um all things we did uh this past year. Um so, Mr. Chair, at this time, I would actually like to pass it over to Adam, who's gonna go through a presentation first.
Thank you, Superintendent Lofts. Uh we shall now do the presentation and then I will read the motion and then place it on the floor. Adam, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to all those trustees who are allowing me to present the financial statements for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Uh next slide, please. So when you look at our financial statements, there are seven main components to the financial statements. They're listed on this slide. Uh two things that I just wanna highlight for the board this evening. The first one being the auditor's report and then the second one being the notes to the financial statements. So with respect to the audit report that's included as part of the draft financial statements, uh you will notice that it's an unmodified audit report, audit- you will notice that it's an unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that our external auditors can provide with respect to our audit. The financial statements are audited in accordance with the regulation that's outlined in note one to the financial statements. So there's a slight deviation from typical public sector accounting standards when it comes to the education sector that largely deals with the contributions that we receive for capital. The way that they have us treating capital contributions is sort of under the matching principle where we recognize the revenue as we amortize the asset over its useful life, rather than recognizing all the revenue upfront and then just incurring expenses yearly with no offsetting revenue. So that's the one kind of nuance in the education sector that you won't see in other public sector entities when you're looking at their financial statements. So moving on to the next slide, please. You'll also notice in the financial statements that there were a couple of new accounting standards this year that we had to adopt. The first kind of portion of this slide outlines four new standards that go hand in hand together, really dealing with financial instruments, investments and the presentation of those in the financial statements. And then the second piece, which actually had an impact on our school board financial statements, is the retirement, asset retirement obligations. So this was a new, new standard that all public sector entities had to adopt. And for school boards, basically this required us to assess all our sites, our school sites and assets and determine if there's any legal obligation to remediate items that we've identified in those properties or with those assets by the end of their useful life. So this is things like asbestos remediation in our, our buildings. If we have septic or wells or things of that nature. For our school board, our only real area here was asbestos in some of our schools. And you'll notice on our statement of financial position, there's a new liability there speaking to asset retirement obligations, but we'll go into that in a bit more detail later on in the presentation. Next slide, please. So when we're looking at our statement of financial position, so there's really two key statements, just as a reminder to all trustees, the statement of financial position are also referred to as our balance sheet in the finance world. So this is at a point in time, which is August thirty first, our year end. And then there's also the statement of operations, which we'll go into in a, in a bit. So we'll walk through the statement of financial position first. If you don't mind changing into the next slide. So looking at our assets on our statement of financial position, so we had cash of eleven point six million. This is composed of two main components, so eight point three million in our operating balances and then three point three million with respect to school generated funds as of August thirty first. When we look at our accounts receivable, we have one hundred and seventy nine point nine million, which is quite a significant amount. The vast majority of it comes through the province and it relates to capital funding that we're receiving. There is a component that relates to property taxes that we collect for an educational purpose. So again, the four municipalities in our region collect property taxes on our behalf. The ministry sets the rates for that. So we set the rates for education development charges, which are also collected through the region, but the ministry sets the rates for, for educational support. That then comes to the schools or school boards. Then we have four point two million for receivables from the government of Canada and as well as two million in recoverable wages and use of facilities. Next slide, please. So when we're looking at our liabilities, our temporary borrowing has decreased fourteen million from the previous year, and this is largely due to the collection of those educational development charges throughout the year that we've applied to our, our debt for the purchases of those new sites that we're building our beautiful new schools on. When we're looking at accounts payable, so there was an increase of thirteen point five million for a total balance of thirty eight million. The large portion of this increase is driven by the timing of essentially progress draws for the three schools that we were, we are building currently. So as of August thirty first, we had outstanding liabilities with respect to kind of the August progress draws related to those projects, as well as some other purchases that we have. And also included in accounts payable and proved liabilities is a two point nine million dollar labor provision. Next slide, please. Continuing on with the liabilities, so deferred revenue as an increase of three point nine million from the previous year. This is largely driven by two components, so the school renewal, which relates to capital, as well as an increase in international student tuition. So again, these are students that paid in advance of the twenty two, twenty, or twenty three, twenty four school year. So as of August thirty first, our year end, we couldn't recognize the revenue for those tuition payments, so they sit as a deferred revenue on our statement of financial position. The next item is employee future benefits of eight point one million. There's a slide later that will kind of walk through a bit of, bit of that in more detail. And then lastly on this slide is the net debt. So this is our capital loans outstanding for previously acquired capital purchases. And next slide, please. So employee future benefits. So for those of you who are kind of new to, to what this is, so this is essentially projecting what through our actuary. So we have an actuary who determines these liabilities to us, but essentially they're for employee benefits into the future. And one of the largest components of that is projecting WSIB costs. So this year in twenty two, twenty three, we saw a significant increase in the projected costs of WSIB for the future to the tune of one point nine million dollar increase in what we had budgeted for, for twenty two, twenty three. And again, the, the budget figure that we use comes from our actuary as well. So they provide us what they are projecting us, our liability to be, so that we can incorporate it into our budget. And then the actual results this year were significantly higher than even what they were projecting our costs to be. And when you look at the five-year trend there on the second kind of table on this slide, you can kind of see that over the last five years, there was one spike in the middle there, but on average, we're in around one point four million in these costs every year. And again, we were three point two five in twenty two, twenty three. So a significant change here. This is also kind of a non-cash change. So we didn't pay out the full three point two million. This is just projecting what these costs could be in the future based on kind of claims that are being dealt with in, in the current year that are related to incidents that happened this year and kind of the last three years before, before this year. All right, next slide, please. And then the last major item in the state or the liability section is the deferred capital contributions. So again, this is relating to the funding that we receive from the ministry for our major capital projects. You can kind of see when we're looking at our amortization of our capital assets, it was twenty one million this year. Our amortization of our deferred capital contributions was only nineteen point five. So there is a one point five million dollar gap when it comes to our capital assets. And these are, this relates to our unsupported capital. So this is capital projects that the board approved previously that we spent our own funds for, that the ministry didn't provide us funding for. So a good example of this is our tracks and turfs. So this is something that we installed ourselves and purchased ourselves, but we also collect funds through rental to offset some of those costs. Next slide, please. So the last liability is asset retirement obligation. So this again is the new kind of section that we had to report. So you'll see a, a number of notes when it comes to the asset retirement obligations in these financial statements. So it talks about in note two, which is the adoption of new accounting standards. There is a note, note nine, that goes through what this asset retirement obligation is for the board. So for, for year end, it was three point two million. So we also had to restate our prior year to reflect what the cost was in twenty one, twenty two as well. And you'll notice that there's a slight increase between what was reported last year and what was recorded this year, and that was due to the ministry applying fourteen percent inflationary rate. So the ministry provided all school boards with a model to kind of use so that we, we're following a consistent model when we are calculating or determining this liability. And between the time that the model was created and our financial statements this year, the ministry thought it was important to increase the costing in that model by fourteen percent to address the increasing costs that we're seeing with rising inflation. Okay, next slide, please. Tangible capital assets. So there's a pretty extensive note in the financial statements, note eleven, that goes through the tangible capital assets. You'll also notice in there the recognizing of the asset portion of that asset retirement obligation. So that's, that's a new kind of column in, in that note to the financial statements. The large driver of the increase here is the three new schools that we're building, we're building in twenty twenty two, twenty three and continue to build in twenty three, twenty four. So that's Saint Keteri, North Oakville number four and Milton number nine. Next slide, please. So accumulated surplus. So when you're looking at our statements, we had a cumulative, or an annual surplus this year from a public sector accounting standard perspective of nine point one million. Then the ministry backs out some costs to determine what our surplus or deficit is for compliance purposes with respect to the funding that they've provided each and every school board. That's kind of the number that you see in the middle of this slide with a couple of nuances. So it says five point four, but there's a couple of adjustments that will, you'll see on a more detailed slide in a minute that brings that number down to the four point nine million that Superintendent Lofts mentioned. And, and then so the items above that middle kind of section are the internally restricted reserves. So these are the amounts that over the years the board has set aside money for. And then the items below that are the items that are unavailable for compliance. So we can't use these funds to cover any future deficits. So the large one that you'll notice below, kind of that middle line, is relating to revenues recognized for land. So again, this is, since we are an EDC eligible board, this is us collecting the funds for the purchase of those sites that, so it's our EDCs that we've collected over the years. We're paying down that debt that you saw on the statement of financial position earlier of seventy eight million. One more. Please, Elizabeth. One more. So now we'll get into the statement of operations. Included in the package that was circulated before this meeting, there's kind of two components, so it walks through the budget to actuals as well as the year over year. If it's okay with everybody, I'll speak to the year over year in this meeting. Because the one kind of nuance to kind of shed light on when we're looking at the budget that's presented in the financial statements. So we are unique as a school board in, in the sense that we have a budget that gets approved in June, but then we have an opportunity to revise our budget in December. For financial statement presentation purposes, the budget that is presented in these financial statements has to be the original budget. So obviously, there was a significant change between what we forecasted in last June versus December. So the information, there is a little out of date. So we'll just speak to actuals versus actuals in this presentation tonight. So Elizabeth, if you can move on to the next slide after this one, please. Right, so when we're looking at our financial statements, our statement of operations from the prior, prior year, so we saw fifteen point one million increase in GSN over the prior year. We saw thirteen point one million less in other provincial grants. And then we saw a couple of other increases this year, two point three million in other revenue and four point two million in school generated funds. So when we're looking at the other provincial grants, kind of the decrease in the middle, the main driving factor for that is COVID nineteen funding. So in twenty one, twenty two, we received significant amount of COVID nineteen funding through grants as well as in-kind PPE, so protective equipment for our staff. We did not receive the same funding in twenty two, twenty three, so that's driving the difference. And you can kind of see in the slide, fourteen, we received fourteen point two million last year related to COVID nineteen funding. So part of that money that was related to COVID nineteen funding in other provincial grants actually did move into the GSN this year. So part of that fifteen point one million was five million being moved from other provincial grants into the GSN category of our financial statements. And then also there was benchmark increases as part of the technical paper for twenty two, twenty three that drove that change of fifteen point one million. And then obviously, a good news story here to highlight is the school generated funds. So we saw a significant increase from the prior year of four point two million for school generated funds, and that's a testament to our school communities and how dedicated they are and how willing and generous they are to kind of support their schools. You can move two slides, Elizabeth. Yeah, so looking at expenses, there are some different categories that we present on the financial statements. So the first line is instruction. We saw an increase of two point three million there. That's largely triggered by the increase in benefits, a large portion of it being that employee future benefit costs that we talked to earlier. From an administration perspective, we saw one point six million increase. That's largely different to professional services, an increase in municipal facility rentals. So we have reciprocal agreements with our municipal partners whereby we rent facilities that they own and they rent or use facilities that we own. So the largest one to kind of like think of when it comes to this is ice rinks. So we, we, we rent time on the municipal ice rinks for our, our students. When it comes to transportation, so there was a slight decrease in transportation. That's due to reduction in COVID cleaning costs. In terms of people accommodation, we saw a relatively significant increase in people accommodation costs. So this is sort of the costs that cover the operations of our, our buildings. So part of that was an increase in salary and benefits due to the increase in custodial staff, as well as our QP members settled their contract negotiations in the year. So as part of that, they receive, you might recall, they receive that dollar per hour increase, so that drove some of the costs over the prior year when we're looking at people accommodation. We also saw an increase in supplies and services, so custodial supplies and, and materials that we needed. And then also in people accommodation is the amortization costs of our building. So as you build more assets, you have more amortization costs to go with them. When we're looking at other expenses, the main driver of this is that reduction in personal protective equipment that was in-kind last year. So not having that reduced our other expenses. Partially offsetting that reduction was an increase in that labor provision. So when we received our funding at the beginning of the, the year, the ministry included in their benchmarks an amount for increases in wages for the various union groups. So since some of those union groups did not settle as of the end of August thirty first, twenty twenty three, we were asked to record a provision for that in other expenses. And then similar to the revenue increase that we saw for school generated funds, we saw an increase in school generated fund expenses in twenty two, twenty three over twenty one, twenty two. Next slide, please, Elizabeth. So when we're looking at our annual accumulated surplus, again, from a public sector standard perspective, we have nine point one million dollar surplus. This is largely driven by the EDC revenue as well as partially offset by the changes in employee future benefits. And then again, school generated funds also drives that. And then again, school generated funds also drives that surplus as well. Next slide, please. So as part of our allocation of our deficit for compliance purposes, what is outlined here is how, how we are kind of, the year-over-year change in those operation reserves and various other reserves based on the costs incurred throughout the year. So a large portion of the compliance deficit is being covered by the operating reserve as well as the capital reserve. Next slide, please. So we spoke to the compliance piece. Again, just as a refresher, so we're allowed to go into a deficit for ministry compliance purposes up to one percent of our, essentially our funds provided by the ministry themselves. As Aaron alluded to earlier, we missed that mark by about nine hundred thousand. So our, our one percent was just over four million. We came in at four point nine million. So from a compliance perspective in our ministry reporting, which should be noted is separate from the financial statements themselves. This is not part of public sector accounting standards. So you don't see it in the notes to the financial statements or anything because it's a ministry reporting thing, not a public sector item. Nevertheless, that is important for us to be in compliance and, and, and try and achieve that. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do that with the significant increase in employee future benefit costs that we kind of saw at that tail end of the, the year, this year. And if we go to the next slide, this sort of outlines how we get to those compliance calculations. So what we've done here is we've shown you what our original budget was projecting in June. So we were projecting to be compliant, actually balanced, so a two, two dollar surplus. So with, ignore the rounding, we were essentially balanced at budget time last June due to the projected enrollment coming in lower. When we revised our estimates last December, we were projecting a three point nine million deficit for compliance purposes, which was just below the four million available to us under that one percent category. And then in the middle there is what our actuals is. So they, from a revenue perspective, they take our total revenue, they reduce it by our school generated funds revenue, they reduce it by our education development charges revenue, and they reduce it by our asset retirement obligation revenue. And then looking at expenses, they do something similar. They reduce our expenses by the S, school generated fund expenses, by the capital projects that we're committed to that were unsupported prior to September twenty nineteen as well as our sinking fund interest earned and our asset retirement obligation expenses. And then they also add a cost to our funding, our expenses related to employee future benefit adjustments and interest to be accrued on long-term debt. So when you factor in all those changes, we go from that nine point one million dollar surplus from a public sector financial reporting perspective to the five million dollar deficit for ministry compliance purposes. And this slide just, just again shows what our accumulated surplus is broken out into of the one hundred ninety four point six million. You'll notice in the financial statements that there is that prior year adjustment for asset retirement obligations of one point seven million. That kind of impacts us at the beginning. And then we get the surplus for this year, bringing us to the one, one hundred ninety four point six million. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cross, for your presentation. I shall now read the motion. We'll place the motion on tape on the floor, and then we shall take questions. Can we have the motion up on the screen? Thank you. The motion goes as follows. Result of the Holden Catholic District School Board approved the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three draft audited, audited financial statements. May I have a mover, please? Moved by trustee Ohern Chenada, looking for a second, please.
One second.
Trustee Paul. The motion is in order, it's on the floor, in the floor. I shall now ask, I shall now open up question period. As I mentioned, three minutes for questions, three minutes for debate. I shall time, time you, and then we have a speaker's list, so.
Sir, can you just clarify, three minutes for questions for everybody or per person?
Per person. Three minutes per person as per bylaw ten point, let's say.
That's just a question, not the answer, just the question itself.
Just a question.
Okay.
Bylaw ten point four, yeah, just a question. So I shall start and stop the timer when you, you ask a question. If you have a longer question, your time goes quicker, so. So we have a speaker list, yes, trustee Saunders.
Just one question, or can we come back?
You can, you continue asking questions, you fill up three minutes, okay? And then we get into the debate time. I shall allow you to use that time instead of debate for a question, if you're not getting to debate.
Debate just among the trustees about approving the motion, is that the debate?
Yes, it's the motion in front of us. We are talking about the, the motion in front of us, which is resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board approved the twenty twenty three draft audited financial statements. We have Mr. Cross here and Superintendent Loft who will answer the questions. Director Klein, through Director Klein, of course. And, yep, so trustee Carabella, you have questions?
Thank you, I'd like a clarification, Mr. Chair, on which bylaw are you using?
Ten point four. It's an action item, any action item will follow that.
I just wanted to point out that this is coming as an action item directly. And usually, we have staff reports coming first.
True.
So that we have more time, more questions that happen, which we didn't have an information report about this. It came straight as an action item. So I'm, I'm, I would not wish that our questions are limited. If that, maybe we can use it within the three minutes for everybody. But also, it's, it's important, we should be able to ask questions, and we didn't have the opportunity. We usually, if there's a, a vote, we have it the two weeks before at our board meeting where there's more questions, and then it comes as an action item, where usually it's, it's quicker. Just wanted to, to say that, I think that's fair.
Thank you for your input. So trustee Carabella, this has come from audit committee. This is an, an action item, come to us from the audit committee. We have, we have policies, we have, it's just like any other item coming to us from any policy. The, the audit committee is made up of a group of trustees as well as professionals from the industries. We have the auditors part of that, we have the regional auditors part of that group. So we have professionals in that group who are taking a look. So this item will be treated just like any other item, as an action item. Okay, there's no distinction between that. So it's three minutes for questions, three minutes for debate, and we will continue. Thank you. With that, I shall open up the floor for question time. First up, trustee Saunders, you have the floor. You have three minutes, and your time starts now.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to, to Superintendent Loft. I mean, the, the board should be aware that our involvement with this non-compliance is not a benign. We're actually involved quite seriously, and there can be implications. Like, if I can just read from the ministry, things as, boards have fallen to deficit or high risk of falling into deficit required to complete a financial recovery plan. Deficits are permitted where the board is under supervision or subject to order. The minister may order the board to adopt a financial recovery plan if the board has a deficit or appears that it will have a deficit. The minister may approve the plan or reject it and under, and require a new plan. Board must comply with a approved, approved financial recovery plan until such time as the board is out of deficit. The minister may direct the investigation into the financial affairs of board if the financial statements indicate the board has a deficit. On receiving the report of the investigator, the minister may issue any order or direction to the board. If the board does not comply, control, control of the board can be transferred to the minister. Control of the board can be transferred directly to the minister if, if that action is, is recommended in the investigator's report. And then finally, a member of the board who vote for an application of the funds, otherwise then as directed by the minister, may be personally liable for the costs. And the minister may dismiss the from office, any employer trustee who fails to carry out this directive. An order placing the board under supervision must be revoked when the board finishes a year with a balanced budget or when the lieutenant governor and council orders us to do so. So this is pretty serious stuff, and, and we, we, we are kind of hooked into this. And so I hope as we move forward, you know, like the plan is, is, is given to us and then we are involved as we move forward. And I, I know this may be painted as micromanaging, but this actually impacts us, so thank you.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Just to clarify, you read the document, what's the, from where is it taken?
This is from the Big Government School Board's Trustee Professional Development Program Module thirteen finance.
So it's from a module, okay, thank you, thank you. I shall pass this question to Director Klein, Director Klein.
I would agree what you were reading there had serious undertones to it. I'm just not sure it applies in this case. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Loft to maybe clarify some of this because I think a lot of the language around it is something that, again, I'll just say it's, it's noteworthy, but it doesn't apply.
Superintendent Loft?
Thank you, through Mr. Chair, to trustee Saunders. Trustee Saunders, that relates to the budget, not to the financial statements. We did contact the ministry right away to let the minister know as soon as we found out in the of October or, you know, around the middle of October, I guess, before we did all our numbers, make sure. We did contact the ministry and receive response saying back, especially when it was, because they asked for what, what caused it, employee future benefits was the main cause, which is coming from actuaries. So we did receive that. But what you're quoting there, you're a hundred percent correct if it was the budget. When we brought in the budget in the springtime, that would, we'd have to come up with a plan and how we would do it. Because at that point in time, we know it's an estimate that we're getting from SPCI. We don't get the actuals until we're starting to do our final after the end of the year, so.
Thank you, trustee Saunders, do you have?
Yeah, but I believe we are required to come up with a plan.
Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I know we are not. Per, we've asked the ministry, we've gone through to the ministry, we've asked. They said, thank you for letting us know, it's already over. Not over, the, the year end has been completed. We've explained what it is. What we've been asked to do by the ministry is to, if we see anything come up that's with our EFB or employee future benefits, to let them know as soon as possible. But again, last year, you saw the Adam slide, it was one point three three seven. And that's what we received when we did revised estimates, and by the end, it was significantly larger from our actuaries. And so as far as any follow-up that we have to do, we thought we might have to do one, two. We weren't sure, and that's why we reached out to see what we need to do and what we need to bring to trustees. Because we weren't sure either. So that's why we contacted them as soon as we figured it out that it was what it was going to be, and then to get direction from the ministry, so.
Thank you, trustee Saunders, done, okay. Thank you, trustee Saunders. Up next is trustee Carabella, trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think some of my questions was answered just now because I was wondering if I'm looking at this point number six from the opening report. So HCDSP has discussed the non-compliance with the ministry, and the ministry requires no further approvals. So I'm wondering, I'm hearing now what's been going on, but did they give you that in writing? Is that something you can share with the board?
Superintendent Loft or Director Klein, sorry?
We did definitely receive it in writing. We received, it was an email that we received back, it was from a manager at the ministry. Basically, we followed the chain, right? We sent it off to our financial officer, and then he was off on vacations. We went to the next person up to see what we had to do. He took some time to get back to us, asked for the explanation as to what the main cause was it or was it, how it resulted from. And it really was, if we didn't have that surprise with the EFB, we would have been a compliant budget. So that was the main part. Once we informed them of that, he took it away, came back the next day and said that no further actions required. And then like I read before, they keep on monitoring it at revised to let them know. And if we figure out throughout the year, if we ever anticipate another one, to let them know as soon as possible. But from a budgetary standpoint, there's really not much we could have done differently, per se, because we get the information from our actuaries, and that's what we budgeted for. Just like pretty much every board in the province uses the same actuaries, SPCI, School Board, Cooperative Incorporated. So ministry realizes there's not much difference we could have done for our budgeting process other than get additional information when we do the revised again to see if anything's changed, and then we can adjust for it accordingly. Obviously, Adam and I have been talking about this as well. We don't want this to happen, so we may be going, treating it a little differently next year. And if it go, it can swing the other way too, trustee Carabella. Like, we had the deficit this year, but it's swinging the other way next year because they're discounting everything back. So we've had years where we've actually had a bump in our, in our surplus because of employee future benefits. This year, there wasn't a bump, it was a negative impact. So we've been talking as well, we don't want to have this surprise again. So we might be adding more to it, even though SPCI gives us a number and a value to use, we'll be adding more to it, so.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft, trustee Carabella.
Just to follow up then, so just for me to understand, why was it a surprise? Thank you.
Superintendent Loft?
So it's, and Adam, you can jump in too on this, but I'll start it off. And it was, so we receive our final, so what happens with our employee future benefits is we do an estimate and they discount it back. So it's something where, if the event happens this year, there's some situations where it could go on theoretically for four years. So it kind of gets discounted back to current year. So if we had certain WSIB items, concussion or something, where concussion could go beyond a current year. Could be a long-term type of event, but you don't know, it might not. So that's why, so it takes it from the conservative approach of saying, all right, if you have to pay this individual for four years, you need to put that money aside and take the, the impact in the current year. So when we sent it forward, we received it back last year for our budget, and the only number we had was for revised estimates, it was one point three three seven. What our actual was, that we got was one point nine higher than that value. So when we get our final report after, I guess we got our final one in October, first week or so of October, last week is September, first week of October, it was significantly above what we brought back to revised estimates.
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
I'm okay for now.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Up next is trustee Ohern Chenada, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to say, last week, I think, you know, with my fellow trustees, trustee Kennedy and trustee Saunders, who, we are very lucky to sit on the audit committee. We had a great meeting last week, lots of questions. We went through the financial statement piece by piece and asked lots of really intelligent questions. And, and just to remind that it was passed unanimously at that audit committee at that time. I just wanted one quick clarifying question. You indicated, or maybe Adam did, so I apologize, unmodified. So the audit report is considered unmodified, and if I understood correctly, that's the highest level that we can get to from an external audit perspective to look at our financial statements. So they gave us, let's say, the gold seal of approval. We may not like the numbers, but they were audited and in non-compliance, but they were done properly, is what I'm trying to say, in a very long way.
Superintendent Loft?
Mr. Chair, through you, to trustee Horns, that is correct, yes. It was an unqualified opinion that we received from our honors.
Thank you. Just one other follow-up. Superintendent Loft, and with no disrespect to anyone else that question, if you said you talked to the ministry and your staff has talked to the ministry, that's good enough for me, thank you.
Thank you, super, trustee Ohern Chenada. Do you have any other question? Okay, thank you. We shall now move on to the next speaker, which is trustee Kennedy. Trustee Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thanks, just wondering, when did we become where we were offside, non-compliant?
Superintendent Loft?
Mr. Chair, we realized it when we got, I guess, the first week or so of October, and then we sent it to the ministry October thirteenth.
Trustee Kennedy?
And regarding like, you know, doing things differently, I think, you know, money being fungible, it's easy to say it's the employee future benefits, that's definitely a cost. And I will, I was talking to Superintendent Loft, we do get less funding from the ministry versus our co-terminus board, it has to be about six million dollars, it's a big amount of money. Can't change that, but maybe there are some things, we can have an action plan on PD, legal fees, absenteeism, hiring. There are some things that we might be able to do. And I'm just wondering if we, while we don't, we're not required to submit a plan, are we preparing a plan internally to try to get this as in to not happen again next year?
Superintendent Loft?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and to trustee Kennedy. We did bring our budget back in June. So the two major parts that we talked about earlier, being the enrollment, being that big drop, like six hundred and thirty-one students is the size of a good-sized elementary school. That's a significant number of students that you lost funding for, right? As, as, as a system, as well as on the other side, on the expense side too. We kind of adjusted our, our, our complement accordingly to how the funding model is currently laid out to us. So that's to help as well in this problem that we had last year, that was a significant change. And one thing too, and I think we And one thing too, and I think we have to understand as well is, and I agree with trustee Saunders said earlier about looking at our enrollment, that is a key as well. I definitely agree with that. And that's, that's part of where we're going with, with our system, I think, is a concern. And I see too, it's not necessarily, it seems to be more of a halt and concern as well. We've been used to 30, I'm going to throw, I'm not sure if it's 30 years, but at least 15 years of positive growth where we're going up. And the last three years, we haven't as an organization. So overall, the last three years, our change year-over-year has been going down. So it's something, it's difficult to get used to as an organization, especially when it's always been, we've always been adding staff, right? We've been growing, adding staff. It definitely helps at, when you're growing and then your numbers are even higher in the second term, the way you anticipated. And it definitely leads to your surpluses, which makes it a lot easier to budget. This is a challenging budget period when you don't have that growth anymore and you have so many costs that are really, I'm not going to say they're fixed costs per se, there's definitely a variable aspect to them, but a large part of our, of our cost is salaries and benefits. We all know that. So I guess it's a long way to get around your question. We'll be bringing that back, revised estimates, in two meetings, so just the meeting before Christmas. So we're still going through that, trustee Kennedy, to see where we're at, but where we were at least in June was in a positive position, so.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
Yes, so regarding like salaries and benefits, so I did notice we do have more employees than we did in March of 2020, and we have less students. So, you know, we're losing, I've been looking at the ministry, I've said 739 students, $8.5 million, but we have, you know, 60, 70 more employees, $5 million-ish. So, you know, we're losing, say, customers, but we're adding staff. So can we not have a plan around that to kind of right-size? Because we can't keep doing that.
Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy, I, we agree. One thing to remember too, some of those numbers were the COVID years, right? So we got the extra funding. We had a board motion as well to cap our class size at 25. So we did dip into our reserves for that. We also received significant dollars from the ministry too to kind of offset that. And that's been part of our, the concern is the enrollment up until that point in time, if you look back to pre-COVID, so 2019, 20, I'm going to call pre-COVID, even though it kind of started, all our plans were already made, we were still in a growth model. So that year, we were still having growth. It was after that year, that was almost our peak. And then from that year on, we've been declining enrollment. So it was almost a perfect storm from that perspective, whereas we had the additional staff because the 25 to 1, because of the ministry additional funding. But then the revenue, the, sorry, well, revenue and the students didn't follow at that point in time. And it's something that we've had to look at. It's a paradigm shift for a board and it's a difficult paradigm shift. Trust me, I know it's a difficult paradigm shift. To, when you're used to having growth, you're used to having the revenues associated with growth, and then all of a sudden, you don't have that same growth as an organization. It's, it's been difficult. It's a difficult budgeting practice. It has been. We saw it at revised estimates too.
Trustee Kennedy?
Thank you. So, yeah, I don't necessarily know if it's teaching, you know, staff. I know when the student population goes down, we do right-size those classrooms. But it may be another on, another non-teaching staff. Now, if you look at the public board's statements and, you know, their presentation in June, they actually lay out teachers, assistants, custodians, everything. It'd be really nice to get kind of some of that, you know, transparency to see where movements are happening. I have a couple of questions too. Supplies and services are up 18% or $6 million, and fees and contract services are up 10% or $2 million. What if supplies and services, what would be the big thing there and where are contract services?
Superintendent Loft?
Oh, and do those include legal fees, those categories?
Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair. And you want, and they do include, fees and contractual do include legal fees. Maybe I'll just hand it to Adam for this one.
Sure. And through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. So supplies and services, it's a broad category that essentially goes to kind of all the materials and items that we use in the various departments within our board. The largest portion of this increase, this is the category where our school-generated fund expenses sit. So if you recall from the presentation, we had about 4.4 million increase in school-generated fund expenses in 22, 23. So that is a good chunk of that $6 million that you're referring to, that year-over-year change is coming from the schools and the materials that they're purchasing for their students through their school-generated funds. Also, within there, we did get an extra grant last year relating to tutoring. And as part of that, there was a significant amount of tutoring supports that we purchased, around 200,000 tutoring supports in, in the year. And then the last piece really goes back to the people accommodation kind of category that we talked about. So we saw an increase in electrical costs, we saw an increase in hydro costs, and we saw an increase in custodial supply costs. So electrical was about 700,000, hydro was about 440, and custodial supplies was 300.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
Just regarding reserves, so just for all trustees, we were at $43 million in reserves in August of 2021. Now we're at $30 million. So it's $13 million in two years, which is obviously quite significant. And we've gone down about 30% in the last year. And within that, we've got operating reserves. They were $12 million two years ago, then $8 million, and now $5 million. That's obviously not even just over 1% of our operating budget. So I thought it maybe kind of talked about, we should have 2% of our operating budget. So do we have kind of a plan to kind of get that? What can we do there?
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Superintendent Loft?
Thank you. Through you, through Mr. Chair. One thing to remember, and to trustee Kennedy, one thing to remember is the ministry wanted us using our reserve during COVID. So it was up to 2%. So the anticipation was that we were going to use our reserve during that period of time. So that's something to remember as well. So we were, there was an expectation there during COVID to use our reserve to help get us through that period. Over the, over the last number of years, we've actually had an increase overall to our reserves, going back to 2016, 17. So there's been a significant increase over that period of time, including the last couple of years. So. And I'm going from a, from a compliance reserve. That's what I'm speaking on, our overall SGF kind of, just comparing what we have for compliance purposes, that has gone up.
The operating reserves concern me. I mean, we're down 40% year-over-year and that's our day-to-day, right? So if we go under that, we just can't operate, or I don't know what we're going to do. You know, we're about 1.2% of our operating budget and the public war is about 2.2, so it's significant. Do we need a consultant to help us here to try to get some cost cutting to, to control this operating reserve?
Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair, Director Klein or Director Klein?
No, I don't think so. I don't think at this point, we've got, we've got a very able group of people in business and finance, and I think I trust their work.
Trustee Kennedy?
So can we get our director committed to a plan to try to maybe give, maybe more regular updates, maybe monthly updates on the budget and where we're going? Because, you know, one more year of this and we're going to be negative on the operating. You can't have that.
Director Klein, would you be in a position to do that or?
Certainly something we could take back to our department and see how feasible that is.
Thank you. With that, trustee Kennedy, you have completed your three minutes. I've given you some bonus time. We shall move on down our speakers list to trustee Murphy. Give me a second. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Sharon. Through you. I'm just trying to get some clarity on timelines, and so I just want to make sure I'm clear. So in June of this year, we represented the budget for the 2022, 2023 year, correct? No?
23, 24. So this is current year. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so then now that we're receiving these statements, the budget will be revised in December, correct?
Superintendent Loft?
Yes and no. So the one in December we bring back is for this current year, right? So for 23, 24. What we're looking at today is for last year. So this was last year's budget, or last year's financial statements, ending August 31st of 2023.
I have to take notes.
So the statements today that we're looking at relate back to our last school year, so 22, 23. The one that I'm going to bring in a couple of weeks is going to be for this current school year.
Which is going to be a further statement?
That's correct. Yeah, it's the revised.
Got it. Okay, so then that one will be the basis for any revisions for the 2023, 2024 budget in December. Will that budget then be presented to us again? When will that happen?
Superintendent Loft?
It'll be the 21st of December. Yeah, it's just before Christmas. So it'll be at that meeting. We have to file, it's just the timing of our meetings. We do it, obviously every year, but pretty much every year, where we technically have to file with the ministry by the 15th, with the caveat included in that if we need to make any changes, we can bring it back and let the ministry know, but 21st we have our board meetings. So you might see something, somebody say, or you read somewhere, it says the 15th, we will file our EFS statements through, and the EFSes are big. All the reporting that we do to the ministry. So it's about 284 pages is what it was for year-end, so for our statement. So we will file that with the ministry, with the caveat that we need to get the approval and bring it back to board. And if there's any changes or any adjustments, we will have to refile again with the ministry. The ministry has been fine with that explanation for the past number of years.
Trustee Murphy?
Yeah, so I'm still just trying to understand. So then like two budgets are being audited in the same year? Like, I'm just wondering what, right?
Yeah.
It's confusing for me to understand the timelines.
So you're right. We do the estimates. When we do the estimates in June, so the one that we all did in June, those ones are for this current year. But we're only estimating the enrollment, right? We don't know what the October enrollment is because the two count dates are October 31st and then March 31st. So when we're doing it in June, we don't have an idea what our enrollment is going to look like. I shouldn't say that, we have an idea, but we don't have something more concrete. When we bring it back in December, called revised estimates, we have a better idea because we're going to have the October 31st count date done. So we've already done what our enrollment is as of October 31st. So now we're really only estimating on the March 31st count date. So it's a little more accurate than our actual original revenue or original estimates were. That's why we had the issue last year with, with our, with our revised estimates, in that our enrollment was down and then our teaching staff was, or our staff, I'm just saying, staffing was constant. So that's what would cause all the, the adjustments we had to make last year for revised. This year, as we know, our enrollment looks better. The estimate is, like I said, they're still lower, elementary's lower, but secondary is up. So as a board, I think we're up about one or two students overall in net as a, as a group. Whereas last year, we were down, like I said, 603 to 1 compared to estimates. So it's, it's a significant difference.
Okay, I kind of have one more.
Trustee Murphy, go ahead, keep going.
So just so I'm clear, so every year can we expect to see two separate statements, one for the previous year and one for the current year around this time of year? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. No further questions? Okay, with that, with that, we have completed question. Trustee Saunders, you have had question? You have had, we have, I'm in question period. You have had an opportunity to go first. You had three minutes and that's done. So. Yes, so I'm going to, I'm getting, I'm getting there. So with this, we have wound up the question period, three minutes. So now, now I'm going to open up three minutes of debate, okay? And if you do not want to debate, I'll give you a question to ask. So first up is trustee Saunders. You have the floor for debate or a question?
Okay, it's a debatable question. So I guess for the benefit of a trustee or her, the statement said they were fairly presented within materiality, so there could be $13 million out. And also, we could have a line on there that says we spent like a million dollars on pony rides, and it would still be, if we present that fairly, so it's not a blessing of, of, it's just, they presented fairly. So just, just for your benefit. So my question to.
I'm sorry, point of order. What? I don't understand what that is. Please, Mr.
Trustee Uhun Chenara?
Is that, is that, is that directed at me?
Yeah, no, no, you.
Trustee Saunders, this is a point of order.
Thank you.
The chair will rule.
Okay.
I just need clarification of that statement because I'm perceiving it to be something, maybe it's not.
Point of privilege, correct?
Yes, please.
Yes. So the question has been raised. You've made a statement, you've said something, and the clarification is big shot. So trustee Saunders, could you go back to that statement?
I will, yeah. It's a common misconception when people read financial statements when it says it's presented fairly. Because all it's saying is that what's here is accurate, it's presented fairly, and it's, and it can be, you know, the calculations are correct. It's not a blessing that this is, these financial statements are, are, are okay. It's just, and it's within materiality. So we have a $13 million error in there. So it's, it's, it's not, it's not a criticism, it's just a very common misconception.
Trustee Saunders, trustee Saunders, I got a rule on point of privilege. Okay. So you have given a clarification. So let me remind you that all, all the trustees sitting here are not financial persons.
Yeah, okay.
The jargon that you are referring to, and the misconceptions are not clear to everybody. So, trustee Saunders, trustee.
Point of privilege, Mr. Chair. I deal with financial statements. So do not, don't, don't say that, please. Do not say that, okay? Excuse me. Mr. Chair, may I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Because I have a point of privilege. I asked a question to superintendent Loft, who is our CFO? I got an answer from the CFO. I appreciate trustee Saunders, but please don't do that because I deal with financial statements. And there's no point of order for being personally insulted, but I just was. So your perception probably isn't that, and I will shut my mouth, but I asked a question to the CFO of the board. I got the answer from our CFO. That's good enough for me. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Uhun Chenara. I shall now rule on the point of privilege. Trustee Uhun Chenara's point of privilege is in order. Trustee Saunders, you will proceed. And I'm going to ask you to be careful about the words that you choose. We are in a public session here, okay? And words do matter, okay? So give me a second, give me a second, please. Give me, give me a second, please. Trustee Saunders, please proceed.
Okay, no, and no disrespect. I'm sorry, it's just a misconception. So my question for superintendent Loft through you is, so we've got about 350 additional students that we didn't anticipate. So I'm, I'm thinking our GSN is going to go up by about $3.5 million. When does this money arrive?
Superintendent Loft? Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, and to trustee Saunders. When does the money arrive? Well, it'll arrive when we start, when we file our revised estimates. Having said that, we've already looked at our staffing numbers and adjusted accordingly, knowing that we will be receiving that money on the secondary. Yeah, we will be receiving it, yeah. So that, any money that's associated with that enrollment bump, we will be receiving. It's just a timing difference. It's when it's going to be received.
Thank you. Up next is trustee Kennedy. Trustee Kennedy, you have the floor. You have three minutes for debate or question.
So we base our, our students in June, and then we, the ministry, we, we had a different number, which was higher than our estimates. So we're going to get GSN for 400 more, but did we hire any extra teachers?
Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We should really preference that. When I said 400, that was in the secondary panel. Secondary panel went down, right? Elementary did not go up. Elementary went down from where we were. Not a large amount, but still an amount that went down. And to your, your question though, we did, yes, you are correct. There would have been an additional hiring as a result of the increase in enrollment.
How many?
I don't have that information.
Thank you, trustees. Thank you, Superintendent Loft. With that, I have no further questions. No, it's, it's a question, either debate or a question. And that's what I've given all trustees, and I've explained the rules before. Do you want a follow-up question on that? Okay, go ahead.
My concern is, if we're projecting to you, and staff, but if we under project, students in June, based on what we get in GSN, we don't have enough teachers to have this. We will have access points. But that's a concern because the timeline don't match up. I feel the teachers are starting to. So I just, you know, just for trustee, they just, just to be clear, we had 12 million of operating for two years. Now we have less than that this year. People under operating for. But I would really like to hear a little more, and for, not today, as there's going to be a plan of actually. But if people from 43 to 45 to 30, and keep this deeper operation going, and continue to lose GSN funding, and continue to hire more.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Superintendent Loft?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. And, and I'm glad you brought that up, trustee Kennedy, because the problem that we had the previous year was that students didn't come. So that's why we had the deficit, which we're all talking about tonight. So part of the plan this year was to change the way we did things. We had to change it. We were being responsible in changing the way that we staff. Hypothetically, let's say that the students didn't come, like they didn't come the year before. I would be coming before you this year with a significant deficit again because A, I would have teachers, additional teachers that I don't have the students for. So I, I, I don't know how to address your question because the problem that we're talking about for this year is exactly what happened. Where that we had an estimate, the students didn't come, and then we had no revenue or the reduction in revenue, and then a, and, and an increase in expense. So unfortunately, with the model that we have, and one part to it, the collective agreements is, unlike the private sector or different areas, when those staffing decisions are made in, in the previous year, we're obligated to have them staff for the. when those staffing decisions are made in in the previous year, we're obligated to have them staff for the whole year. So if the students don't come, those teachers are still in the classroom. And then we have the the problem that we have this year. So I'm kind of glad you brought that up because it's actually caused, I'm not saying caused, but it's it's a, it was a large impact of what happened this current year when the estimates did not tie to to what's what came in the fall.
Thank you, Superintendent. No, you had your question. You had your follow-up. Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. So I shall now be calling the vote shortly, but before that, I just want to say thank you to Superintendent Loft, Adam, and your team behind the scene. There's a lot of work happening there. I want to thank the Audit Committee for the wonderful work they do. We have external auditors. I want to make sure that they understand and and they are thanked enough, as well as the external auditors and the whole team behind the scenes. So it's not just us talking about it. It's a bigger group. So thank you so much on behalf of this board. Okay, so with that, I shall call the vote on the motion in front of us. I shall read the motion again. Be it resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three draft audited financial statement. This was moved by Trustee Ohan Chanada and seconded by Trustee Powell. Trustee Kennedy, how do you vote? Sure, Trustee Ohan Chanada?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
If you can put back to me, Mr. Chair, that would be great.
Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
I'm going to abstain.
And trustee, who else? Tell me someone? Okay, and I'm going to vote on this one. Trustee Duarte is in favor. We have five in favor, three opposed, no extension, motion carries. We shall now move on to item ten point two, proposed twenty twenty-four facility renewal projects. Superintendent Merrick, please present about the proposed twenty twenty-four facilities renewal projects. If you could present and then I will read the motion. Thank you. Superintendent Merrick?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, we have the twenty twenty-four facility renewal projects to be completed in the summer of twenty twenty-four. This report is as presented at the previous board meeting. And we have six schools slated for improvements, five of which you see in your report tonight. And then we also have the one that we did not complete last summer that we deferred to summer twenty twenty-four, being the the turf replacement at St. Francis Xavier in Milton. And so the estimated cost for all of those projects that you see in your report is nine point two five million dollars. And that would be funded through our available capital sources in the Capital Reserve, of which we have about thirteen point eight million dollars available in funds right now. So that, we bring forward two resolutions tonight, which the chair will read. But the first is to approve the projects listed in the report, and the second to approve the budget at nine point two five million dollars. Have you taken any questions that trustees may have on this report tonight?
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. I will first read the first motion, and then I'll place it on the floor, and then we'll take questions from trustees, okay? The first motion is in front of us. Trustees, resulted the Holden Catholic District School Board authorized staff to proceed with the proposed twenty twenty-four facility renewal projects. May I have a mover, please? Trustee Kelly? I saw you moving to the phone. Yes, okay. Second, but Trustee Powell? I shall now place this on the floor. For trustees, the motion is in order. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Merrick? Or or do we want to debate, discuss? Seeing none, I shall call the vote on the first motion. Trustee Ohan Chanada?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy? So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no extension, motion carries. We shall now move on to the second part of this motion. Result of the Holden Catholic District School Board authorized staff to expense funds from available capital funding and the capital reserves for the proposed twenty twenty-four facility renewal projects, and that the expenditures will not exceed nine million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. May I have a mover for this, please? Moved by trustee Agnew. Looking for a second, please.
Second.
Trustee Powell. Trustees, do we have any questions for Superintendent Merrick? Seeing none, I shall call the vote on the second motion that trustees you see on the screen. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no, no extension, motion carries. Thank you, Superintendent Merrick, for that. We shall now move on to item ten point five, policy II dash twelve, academic promotion. Trustee Ohan Chanada, could you please read the motion? Yes.
No problem. Take your time, Elizabeth. We can wait. No problem. Thank you, Elizabeth. The following recommendation is presented for the consideration of the board. Be it resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy triple I dash twelve academic promotion be approved.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanada. Trustee Ohan Chanada moves this motion. Decided it must come from the board, from from policy. Come to the board from policy, and we need only a mover. This item was asked to be removed by trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I removed it from the consent agenda because the voting at the Policy Committee was not unanimous. It wasn't. So I'm just going to have a a vote that's different from in favor, right? So that, you know, it can't be voted on as part of the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Fair enough. Trustees have the opportunity to do that. So if trustees, do we have any other questions on this policy? Seeing none, I shall call the vote on item ten point five, policy II dash twelve, academic promotions. And this is a policy which has come up, come from policy to the board. Trustee Murphy, how do you vote on this?
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Oppose.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
And trustee Duarte is in favor. We have five in favor, four opposed, no extension, motion carries. Shall now move on to item ten point six, rescind policy II dash O two, educational assist, assistant, assistance. Trustee Ohan Chanada, can you please read the motion?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. The following recommendation is presented for the consideration of the board. Be it resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy II dash zero two educational assistance be rescinded.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. This item has come to the board again from policy, and we need only a mover. So this item was asked to be removed by trustee Saunders. Trustee Saunders, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, through you, if Superintendent, HR Superintendent could just explain it to us. I didn't, I didn't understand what we're trying to achieve by this. I've reflected on it, and I don't really understand what we're trying to do. So it, I just need a clarification before voting, so.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Superintendent Oldman, could you respond to this, please?
Sure, through you, Chair. As we discussed at the policy meeting, after reflection with myself and Superintendent Jack Caldera, this isn't normatively how a policy would be structured. This really is reflective of an EH job description in our deployment. So for that reason, we recommended that it was really redundant and inappropriate to have it in policy, and that's why we sought its rescinding.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, does it disadvantage educational assistance anyway? Like, it just, it seems to speak that they 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 report to the principal. They, it seems to be almost like to the description of what they do. But if if we rescind this, is this going to put them at some disadvantage?
Okay, let me ask. I'll come to Superintendent Oldman. Director Klein, you want to respond? Do you have any comments?
I can start and then bounce it over to Superintendent Oldman. No, it won't disadvantage educational assistance. And again, it's redundant. It's something that doesn't apply to other, we've got myriad jobs and job descriptions in this board. And that's why it's being taken out, but it would not change the the nature of the work or the expectations around that. But Superintendent Oldman?
Go ahead, Superintendent Oldman.
Through you, Chair. It it would be covered in the job description, these points of that are prescribed. So that's why we think it's redundant. So no, it would have no impact.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Up next is trustee Kennedy. Trustee Kennedy?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just wondering, three years ago, did something change from three years to today that we're moving it now, or we just have new information now? Or just, we just noticed, and I think it's every three years we do these.
Superintendent Oldman?
Through you, Chair. I'm unaware of when, this, this isn't a policy that I've reviewed since I've been here. But in the cycle, I appreciate there is a cycle. I can't speak to when it was last reviewed, but when it came upon my desk and in concert with my colleague and expert colleague and Superintendent, Superintendent Jack Caldera and Special Education Services, that was the recommendation that we made and put before you.
Trustee Kennedy, thank you. So I see no other hands up, so I shall take this to a recorded vote. Trustee? I called a vote.
So you just can see, we're voting on?
Oh, we are voting on the motion, which is on page thirty-six in the package. I shall read the motion for, oh, sorry. Trustee Ohan Chanada, please read the motion again.
The following recommendation is presented for consideration of the board. Be it resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy II dash zero two educational assistance be rescinded.
Thank you, trustees. Trustees, I like your attention here. This is a board meeting. We're having one meeting. Please, if you have questions, you can direct it to the chair.
I didn't have, sorry, who are you referring to?
Yeah, I was referring to you. I just saw you.
I was looking at the screen. I couldn't see that.
Okay, my apologies then. Thanks. But again, I'd like to ask trustees, we're having one board meeting here. Okay. So trustees, are we ready to vote on this? I called a vote on this item. So first off is, and trustee Kennedy, my apologies.
Mr. Chair, so if we, if we, if it's approved, we approve of rescinding the policy. And if it's opposed, we oppose rescinding the policy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So so first, oh shit, sorry. I lost my track for a minute. So we are voting on the motion in front of us, trustees, and I should, I have called a vote. Trustee Murphy, how do you vote?
Favor.
Favor. Trustee Saunders? Stained. Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
We have seven in favor, none opposed, one extension, motion carries. The policy gets rescinded. Our next order of business is staff reports. We do not have any, and then we shall move on to information items. Item twelve point one, Director's Report. Director Klein, please present your report.
Thank you, Chair. A fairly brief report for a fairly long evening that we've had. Be highlighting just three things that fall under, of course, our M Y S P priorities of achieving, believing, and belonging. What we have at the end of this week is our third P A day of the year. Talk about that in a moment. Very important tradition in this board. Keeping Christ in Christmas will follow. Obviously, that reflects our priority of believing and faith in our Catholic tradition. And then belonging looks at some of the noteworthy days that you might see in terms of board, school communication, tweets, or Xs, or other forms of communique over the next few weeks as we end the calendar year. The twenty-fourth of November, in three days' time, two days' time, will mark our third P A day. Elementary schools are focusing on progress reports, which have come out. And that is an opportunity for parents and guardians to meet with staff to have a a good sense of how their student is progressing toward meeting the the expectations of different curricula. Within secondary schools, it's more of a multi-leveled, multifaceted plan there. Student Achievement Plan, that was discussed early on. We talked about some of the shifts and priorities of our ministry. Often, it used to be called the Board Improvement Plan, or School, School Improvement Plan, or School Improvement and Equity Plan. We've begun the process on that day of having a student achievement plan discussed at, in our high schools. Departments will set goals and timelines and begin to discern the road ahead for them and for the board, so that's for the grassroots moving up. And key to this is data analysis. We'll be focused on supporting as well, I think in the afternoon, the new de-stream courses that have emerged this year, as well as reviewing the best practices, pedagogical practices that have been honed and used in the de-stream courses that we've had thus far. And focuses in promoting and ensuring fair, decent transitions to high school from grade eight and then into grade ten. Keeping Christ in Christmas, again, is an annual hallmark for our board. And the deadline for entries is in two days. And there are four categories: visual artwork, original song, short video, short story or poem. And submissions are reviewed according to divisions, the four divisions, through K to the end of high school. And then we have sixteen finalists, and we have our winners honored right here the next time we meet on December fifth. And of course, that is a fantastic way to begin the Feast of Advent and to end the calendar year and to celebrate all the good things that we have going on in this school board. Noteworthy days are in no, again, priority except for chronological order. Again, we're just ensuring that schools highlight some of the key faith events and other events and and celebrations over the next six weeks or so. And they're there, again, for your review. And if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to to respond to them.
Thank you, Director Klein, for your report. I have a couple of trustees with hands up. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was asked when to ask the director if he could speak to us about the new compulsory course for a technical, technological education.
Director Klein?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, trustee Carabella. And I will bounce it off to Superintendent Del Sorto in a, in a, in a moment or two. This has been something that's been a going concern for boards for several months. And it is, I think, a reflection of the province's focus on on technology and all its myriad forms. We're all aware that our students are entering a world that is rapidly changing, and technology in all its forms is very important. There is a little bit of concern in terms of what these will look like over the next year. We have to have our courses and our course selections ready sooner than later, and we are still waiting some information from the ministry. But I'll turn it over to Superintendent Del Sorto to discuss what this would be looking like and where we're at now in terms of technology.
Go ahead, Superintendent Del Sorto.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Carabella. We knew as of March tenth of last year that the government made an announcement that there will be compulsory grade nine or ten tech credit. What we also heard is that they're going to be releasing a new document, curriculum document. We also knew that the kids have a choice to either take it in grade nine or grade ten, but they cannot take a grade eleven or twelve tech course and have that counted. We don't know if there are any new tech courses coming out in the curriculum document. We don't know if there's going to be any substitution. As you know, according to the Education Act, a principal can substitute up to three compulsory credits. a principal can substitute up to three compulsory credits. Not sure if this might be one as well. So what we've done so far is shared with all school communities as early as October, really the message, and then really working with our pathway itinerants. Our pathway itinerants are in the classroom and they are doing one-on-one with each student, talking about choices and talking about the transition into high schools. And so every student has a pathway planner that they use. And then they go into my blueprint to make course selections. What we wanted to do was constantly inform the community and parents of making an informed decision. And hence, we sent out a system communication that really just shared that you have a choice, but we recommend that you take it as soon as possible, so that this way you have one less worry to think about. What we are doing is monitoring the numbers. What we are also doing is we've looked at every single school in our board and what they offer in grade nine tech, just to see if we have any gaps. And so far, every school offers a variety of grade nine texts. So it could be either an integrated one or a more focused one. So every school is really responding to their community needs. So we are set up for success for September. What we don't know is what the ministry will be, be releasing. And we don't know anything other than that. But what we wanted to make sure is that we inform the community that, starting September, it has to be a compulsory credit. But they do have the choice of whether to take it nine or 10. And at the same time, we're looking at all of our regional programs. So for example, IB or AP, sometimes what happens is they don't have room in their timetable to take that course. So what we're looking at is how might we leverage Merton and do some reach aheads for grade eights going into grade nine, so that they can take another credit and make sure that they have room for the tech credit on their timetable. So so far, we're working with that information from the ministry, planning as we move forward. Because starting as early as first week of December, grade eights are going to start making choices. And so we wanted to make sure that we inform them ASAP.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. You have a follow-up?
No, thank you very much. That's comprehensive. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Vice Chair Agnew.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just a congratulations to the Corpus Christi Longhorns today, who won the Golden Hershey Athletic Conference, and they will be heading to Oxta on Tuesday on behalf of our boards. So congratulations to the Longhorns and go Longhorns.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Trustees, do we have any further questions for Director Klein? If not, Director Klein, thank you for your presenting your updates. We have lots of things happening in our system. Up next, item 12.2, Capital Project Report as of August 31st, 2023. Superintendent Loft, please present your report.
Thank you through, Mr. Chair. Again, everyone, good evening. Please find attached the report, bringing us up to the end of August 2023. Adam and I are available to answer any questions you may have relating to it.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. I see one hand up. Trustee Carabella, you have your hand up? Okay, sorry. It's for the previous one. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Lofts? Seeing none? We shall move on. Thank you, Superintendent Loft, for your report. Item 12.3, Treasurer's Annual Investment Reports. Once again, Superintendent Loft, please present your report.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Attached is the compliance report prescribed in Ontario Regulation 4110, Section 14, Subsection 1. The board did not have any prescribed investment securities recurring this year. In fact, we had none all year. Mr. Chair, this report was submitted as information.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Loft? On item 12.3? Seeing none? Thank you, Superintendent Loft, for presenting your report. We shall move on to item 12.4, which is construction report. Superintendent Merrick, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, we had the construction report for November. We have three schools to report on tonight, the first being the future St. Ceteri, or the Milton Number Three Catholic Secondary School. So some updates you can see from the pictures there. The structural masonry is nearly complete. We have the roof joists going in and the roof deck going on the, on the western portion. We have had some issues with steel availability, and we're doing our best to push our suppliers and definitely keeping busy with other tasks on site. Up next, we have doing the roof and getting the roof on before the winter weather hits, as well as some asphalt happening to get us out of the mud for the winter as well. The next project up is the Milton Number Nine Elementary School. Some updates there. You can see the, there's a photo of the precast lift going on, adding the precast roof deck and mechanical equipment is now on site, so that's well underway. And we'll get us in good shape to have that wrap up in probably late spring. Up next for that project, we have roofing windows and moving on to the interior. And then lastly, we have the Oakville, or North Oakville Number Four Elementary School. That one there, the roof is nearly complete now. It looks almost finished there from the photos. Electrical service is going in and then starting with site works and the parking lots, again, to get us out of the mud before the, the winter weather hits. So up next on that one, we have the brick will be going on shortly, starting with interior painting and then finishes interior as well. So that one's moving along very, very well. Happy to take any questions that trustees may have on those three new build projects.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Merrick? Trustee Carabella, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not a question, but a comment. It's when I drive by the Oakville Number Four. As you're driving, it has a huge frontage. It's really impressive. It's just going to be, I can just picture the name and the cross or something. It's going to be a very nice symbol in the community.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I have a question, Superintendent Merrick. How are all these projects doing schedule-wise?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. The, the two elementary schools are, are well ahead. I mean, we're hoping open those for September. I, I would expect, you know, both of them to finish, like, probably, I'll say late spring for sure. But they're both well underway and, you know, well in advance. Typically, you've been around for enough new builds to know that a lot of times we're there on Labor Day weekend, making sure we get in there. I think those two definitely will be done well in advance. The secondary school, I mean, we're trying to compress a, a 30-month build into a 20-month timeline. It's still a possibility and it's still, we're still on track and, you know, we, it is possible to meet that. We don't have a lot of leeway with, you know, things not showing up on time, you know, hitting bad weather, bad challenges. So it, we're still on track, but we don't have a lot of leeway. So we're, we're pushing our staff as much as we can, our contractors. They're doing an amazing job. We're already probably, you know, six to eight months ahead of where we, we would want to be, or where we ordinarily be on a, on a project. But we still have more compression to do in that schedule. So we'll keep pressing on and update the community as, as, you know, we have more to share in the, in the spring.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustees, any further questions? I see none. So we shall move on to, our next order of business is miscellaneous, miscellaneous information. We do not have a student trustee update. Shall move on to item 13.2, OCSDA update. Trustee Ohan Chanara and Vice Chair Agnew.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to fellow trustees and staff. Just a quick update, just a reminder, on January the 18th to the 20th, it'll be the annual trustee seminar.
One second. Trustee Carabella, can you put your mic so? Sorry, go ahead.
So that'll be the annual seminar. There's a lot of good workshops in there. If you haven't registered, please do so. And then I will defer to trustee Vice Chair Agnew, who sits and was put on the Large Advisory Board for Oxta. So I think Vice Chair Agnew has a quick update for us.
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair. So thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. I do have the privilege of sitting on the Oxta Large Urban Board Committee. And we recently had a meeting, and it was interesting because one of the things that did come up was the conversation around the mandatory tech credits for next year. So what we do talk about at this committee are, you know, issues that are a little bit more relevant and a little bit more impactful for some of the larger boards. And two of the things that we did focus on in our last meeting was around the tech credits and taking a look at what role Oxta can play with respect to lobbying the ministry or advocating to the ministry to make sure that we have appropriate funding. We have appropriate resources in place for equipment, that we have teachers to teach the credits, that we, you know, get the answers that we're looking for. So, you know, fully supportive of this mandate, but making sure that all of the other pieces will fall into place that schools can properly support this tech credit mandate. So that is one of the things that we talked about as a large urban board. The other piece that we talked about was with respect to the moratorium that is currently on place for things like school closures. And how do we get that autonomy back to the boards to make those decisions? And so that's something else that Oxta is looking to move forward with respect to some of the lobbying and the work that they're doing at a ministry level. So it's a, it's a really interesting committee to be on. And again, just to see some things from the perspective of some of those large urban boards and how they're impacting us. So I'll continue to, to bring updates and let people know if there's any action required or if there's any other pieces that we can contribute to as a group here. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara and Vice Chair Agnew. Trustees, do we have questions for trustees? Seeing none? Thank you for that update. We shall move on to our next order of business, which is open question period. Director Klein, do we have any questions submitted?
I know. I'll check with Elizabeth. No.
Thank you. We shall now move on to, our next item is in camera. We do not have to go in camera. We move on to item 17, which is resolution regarding absentees. May I have a motion to excuse trustees Deepu and Chua?
I'll move.
Moved by trustee Kelly, looking for a second. Trustee Carabella, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none. The motion carries. Trustees, Deepu and Chua are, are excused. We now move on to our last, last item, which is adjournment and closing prayers, prayers. May I now please have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Saunders moves. Looking for a second, please. Trustee Carabella, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none. The motion carries. Trustee Saunders, please lead us in a closing prayer. Thank you, trustee Saunders. Thank you, everybody, for a great meeting. Good night.